You Wolf, I will have to, I will have to leave at around 12 o'clock also, I'm sorry.
Problem. Thanks for the heads up, Rick.
Okay, folks, the time is now 10:30, so we'll begin our meeting. This meeting is now open to the public and we have started recording. We'll begin with an introduction to our Spanish interpretation as well as our language justice statement from Tanya Johnson.
Hello, good morning. My name is Tanya and I'm the interpreter for the Environmental Justice Office at CDPE. Today I'm working with my colleague Valentina. I'm going to read the Zoom instructions and the language justice statement in Spanish and then I'll repeat it in English. Hola, buenos dias, me llamo Tanya y soy la interprete de la oficina de justicia ambiental del departamento de salud pública y medio ambiente de Colorado. Hoy estoy trabajando con mi colega Valentina. Antes de comenzar, quiero asegurarme de que todas y todos hayan seleccionado el idioma adecuado en Zoom. Si prefieren escuchar la presentación en español, hagan clic en el globito que aparece en la parte inferior de la pantalla de la computadora y seleccione en español bajo interpretación. Si están usando un teléfono celular o una tableta, hagan clic en los tres puntos que están a la derecha donde dice more o más y eligen el español como su idioma de preferencia. Las y los integrantes de la comunidad están invitados a hacer sus comentarios en español si así lo prefieren. Nuestra organización ha asumido el compromiso de fomentar la justicia lingüística. Invitamos a la comunidad a usar su idioma de preferencia para participar en la reunión. Les agradecemos que hablen lenta y pasadamente y que usen palabras comunes para que sea más fácil de interpretar. And English. Before we get started, I would like to direct everyone to the appropriate language channel on Zoom. If you would prefer to listen in Spanish, please click on the small globe at the bottom of your screen and select Spanish. If you are on a tablet or phone, click the three dots to the right of your screen that says more and select Spanish there. During the meeting, there may be community members who choose to give their comments in Spanish. If you are not bilingual, you will need to click the English option to be able to hear the interpretation. As an organization, we are committed to language justice. We would like to invite community members to participate in the meeting using their language of preference. In order to facilitate interpretation, please speak slowly, pause often, and use commonly understood vocabulary. Thank you so much. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Tanya. Language interpretation is now enabled and I'll turn it over to Scott.
Great. Thank you, Brandon, Tanya, for the introductions for today. Hi, everyone. Welcome to Colorado's fifth technical work session for 2024. Thanks for joining us today. I'm Scott Cassell. I'm the CEO and founder of the Product Stewardship Institute and I am the facilitator for the advisory board. Again, today's meeting is a technical work session. We will discuss two topics: eco-modulation and building circularity. The goal of today's meeting is to provide input to CAA on both of these topics and we will accept public comment following the advisory board discussion at the end of each topic. An electronic roll call will be taken today. We are not doing a verbal roll call for these technical work sessions. So, board members, if you could, please type your name and affiliation in the chat. Be sure to send it to everyone. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Pete. Is it you or to Yuri for eco-modulation?
Yeah, maybe I'll just start just before we move into those slides. There's two additional updates that we wanted to provide. One is the deadline for producer registration is obviously at our doorstep. The registration date is by October 1st. So, our registration team is pushing hard on that side. We have, yesterday, I think, just under 1,300 producers that have registered with CAA. Now, important to underline that some of those companies will be parent companies, so we'll have numerous brands underneath them. So, we are still pushing on that side to get more producers in and my understanding from the registration team is they are seeing a leap in the amount of registration that's happened over the last couple of days. Just in addition to that, I just wanted to mention just on the consultation side. So, we have now finished all of the consultation sessions that we were running separately from this group with the larger stakeholder community. So, we had, I think, very good participation in those sessions. We are looking to summarize those sessions for you, the feedback that we've received and we'll have more of a laid out presentation for you at our next advisory board meeting. But I think high level, you know, we saw roughly, you know, 150 to 200 in each of attendees in each of those sessions. Lots of good feedback that we're in the process of taking into account. Not all of the surveys have closed. We provided a month for all of those, so we are still waiting for some of those sessions to close and making sure that we're pushing out as much as possible to get feedback as part of those sessions. I know there have been a few folks that have sent their materials in late. We will still accommodate for anyone that wants to to send additional information to us or if there's associations that want to send it as a group letter, that is completely fine. So, as I said, we are in the process of summarizing those and we'll be providing summaries back to the advisory board as each of those closes, so as part of our regular sessions.
And Scott and Pete, I have one other very brief update on consultations. As we did, so thanks y'all for people that are there. Wolf, thank you for being there. We did a presentation last, more than presentation, a two-hour workshop with the Recycle Colorado last Friday, just a couple of days ago. So, we gave an update. Wolf gave an update on timeline. We gave an update on progress toward draft plan that we broke into small groups for about 90 minutes and the groups discussed rural recycling, open market collections, and education outreach. And just a couple of quick highlights from that. Education outreach, we heard that, you know, really high summary that there was some alignment around the idea that CAA is well positioned to provide standardized messaging across Colorado with the statewide engagement plan being the lead facilitator, the shared information, best practices. But there is a call amongst the Recycle Colorado membership and attendees for flexibility with standardization, looking for ways to encourage innovation and appropriate messaging that resonates with the local regional constituencies and working with local partners. That was the feedback on education outreach. For rural recycling, we heard some comments and about the amount of time and investment it will take to build infrastructure and the importance of CAA starting quickly with rural because it will take time to build up this infrastructure. And we also heard the tie-in with education outreach for rural that we'll need to look at engaging residents where they go and where they're at such as central locations and stores. So, really like letting folks in rural parts of Colorado know about EPR and how to participate. And then lastly, for open market, quick summary on what we heard from there is the importance of looking for ways to be equitable, competitive, and fair in the reimbursements and procurements to make sure that our independents and local operators and service providers can stay relative and stay relevant and competitive within the marketplace. And then once again, a tie into education outreach, that in order to grow participation in these open market systems, education outreach will be a big part of it. So, making sure that residents and covered entities know that EPR is there. In open markets, they can sign up with certain service providers to get recycling for no fee to them on their bills. So, just a really quick update on that session. And thank you Recycle Colorado for hosting us. It was really informative and data that we are amassed and we continue to collate, put together, will be integral in developing our plan.
Thank you for those updates. Does anyone have any key quick questions on anything there or ready to move into eco-modulation? Okay, yes, Brandon, I did see Valentina's comment here and I was gonna say it anyway because Yuri, you're off to the races and you're our fast talker here. So, I keep getting messages from the interpreters there. They're having a little hard time, so if you could slow down just a little bit. I have to do the same thing. I do the same thing as you do. So, if you and others can keep it at a conversational pace, that would be appreciated by our interpreters.
I will do my best. Thanks, guys. Those East Coast roots, man. I can't like get away from that.
I'm with you there. I'm with you.
Yeah, I wish I could give like a shock of Valentina so you could just like shock me when I speed up. Help me slow down. Well, I will start the, on eco-modulation. Similar to our other, you know, presentations to this group, we have like clustered together, set of slides, then we'll pause and do the Q and A discussion. There's three different groups, groupings in this. So, one's the like the background on eco-modulation and due setting just to make sure we've got this level playing field. Then I'm going to get into looking at the base dues and how we can incorporate some of the eco-modulation factors into the base dues and then how we look at eco-modulation at the producer level. So, kind of three sections to this presentation. So, starting at the beginning, what's in the statute? Pardon me. A couple of different elements in here. One is we must vary, the type, the base dues, producer dues must vary by the type of covered material, whether or not the material is readily recyclable and based on the net recycling service cost for each covered material in the state. So, that's one element in our dues saying is we're looking at the dues themselves and that's by material category. Within that category, all producers will pay the same packaging, the same dues for the same packaging material. So, all producers of boxboard will be paying the same relative due for their boxboard. Additionally, to this base dues, the pro requires, the pros require to set up five eco-modulation incentives and three malices. So, eco-modulation factors that would adjust the producer dues. They will lower producer responsibility dues to incentivize certain practices. So, that's instead of lower the dues and then the malices would increase the dues to dissuade or deter certain practices. Additionally, CDPE, starting in 2026, CDPE Executive Director will annually publish eco-modulation bonus schedule that would reduce dues of producers. Interesting to note in here that the CDPE Executive Director is just on the bonuses, not malices. So, that's what CDP is looking at. Next slide, please. So, what are these eight eco-modulation factors included in the state statute, the legislation? Five incentives, three malices. Incentives are reductions in the amount of packaging materials used for products, source reduction, innovations and practices that enhance the recyclability or commodity value of material. So, makes it easier to recycle, increases the commodity value, high levels of post-consumer recycled material use, designs for reuse or refill of covered materials, and then high recycling and refill rates of covered materials. We'll get into the details of this. We'll talk a little bit about the impacts of reuse and refill, the fact that those aren't necessarily paying, refills not necessarily paying dues because they're excluded and so we, how we have to deal with that. The three malices kind of converse to the incentives or bonuses, designs and practices that increase the cost of recycling or composting, designs and practices that disrupt the recycling system and then for producers using cover materials that are not on the MRL or the material recyclable list. So, malice for materials not on the MRL. There's one other element in the statute that isn't necessarily an eco-modulation factor but we are looking at because it does impact the dues. And this is this additional producer level dues adjustment. This is not in the eco-modulation portion of the statute, but does say that the pro must reduce dues for producers that fund or operate a collection program that covers a specific type of covered material that's not processed by MRFs. So, if there's a separate system that's developed by producers, material is not going to the MRF and that system results in recycling rates that meet or exceed the minimum recycling targets, then the pro must reduce the dues for those materials as well. So, if there's another system out there. Next slide, please. Scott and team. So, we've, I get the honor of presenting on eco-modulation to this group today. This is not my area of expertise. We actually have a number of subject matter experts at CAA that have been working on eco-modulation. They've been talking to other systems around the globe to find out what they've done. Time to Quebec, France, other places like, how does eco-modulation work? What can we learn from what you all have done? What can we bring to Colorado's program? This is some of the highlights of what we're hearing and some of the ideas that kind of lead to our approach. So, one thing we've heard is that the EPR programs outside the US haven't done what are, what we're proposing to do, which is start right away. They've taken time to do this. They've gotten their system stabilized. They've gotten data and then they've moved to eco-modulation as those programs have advanced. Some of this with that stabilization is important when you're looking at budget, what impacts setting bonuses may have or setting malices. Until we get this data, I'll talk more about this later, but the impact of the bonuses affects budgets significantly, right? So, we've got a system cost budget. If we set a bonus, some producers may be able to achieve that bonus, others may not. Just looking at the bonus, that does not, the fact that some producers achieve the bonus or achieve the eco-modulation doesn't lower the system cost. The system cost is still the same. So, what that does do is take the fees that those, or the dues that those producers that achieved the bonus would be paying and displaces them onto other producers in the system. So, without the malices that interact with those bonuses and say the malices to be the same as the bonus or close, you aren't really changing system costs, you're just displacing who's paying those costs. So, looking at stabilization of budget, getting this data and how to set bonuses, malices, is what we're hearing from other organizations is integral in setting appropriate bonuses and malices. We're also psyched, we're excited that there is some flexibility. So, folks that wrote the law in Colorado did a great job. They didn't explicitly call out, really, they put some bonuses and malices in there, but they left some flex in how they're implemented, which we think is great and we'd like to look for ways to allow that flexibility in the program plan as it progresses. And lastly, kind of looking across states. We're just talking about Colorado here, but we know that y'all are aware of CAA's work in Oregon, California as well. We'd love to have eco-modulation harmonized as best it can. The state laws don't necessarily allow for that. Every state's got different laws around eco-modulation. So, when we're looking at it, we'd love, CAA is considering methods to limit variation across states to make it easy for producers to participate and comply, be in compliance. However, it's, you know, it's challenging and looking forward, we'd like to, if additional states adopt EPR, it'd be great to have them look at what the other states have done, see if there's ways to harmonize. So, that's our kind of high level. Next slide, please, Scott. And Pete, wait, and if, anytime, man, if there's things that you might add, go for it. Like two or three more slides on background, just on base dues and eco-modulation. So, we're gonna share on the earlier slide about base dues and really the way we're looking at it is the way it's described in like Consumer Goods Forum's latest paper and this is kind of our approach as well, is that the base dues vary by packaging type. They reflect the recycling cost, revenues, performance of each packaging type, but they're universal for all producers to supply that packaging with, packaging with that specific material type. They'll all pay the same dues. So, all producers, if they're using aluminum cans, they're gonna have the same dues for all aluminum cans. That's the base due. But the fees or the dues for aluminum cans will vary from the dues for cardboard boxes because they each reflect the recycling cost, revenues, and performance of UBCs versus OCC in the recycling system. So, it's like at the material category level. Eco-modulation is looking at the individual producer level. So, within a singular category like UBCs, if there is a producer that is wrapping their aluminum cans with a label that is not aluminum, makes it harder to recycle, that individual producer could have an eco-modulation factor. A pause there because it seems like maybe there's some questions.
Okay, did you want to pause here, Yuri, or in the, on the question slide?
Scott, you got, I will follow your guidance, sir.
Well, since I got two, I can wait.
I've got two more slides.
Slide 11, I don't see which one this one is, but we have a question from Scott. So, since you've asked, we'll take Scott's question.
Scott the 5 GPI, I can wait.
Okay, all right. Yuri, so I just want to ask Tanya here, how's the, how's the speed going? Is this doable? You gonna give a thumbs up or a? Not seeing anything, but I'm a little fast. It's a little fast, so better, but.
Keep trying.
We're gonna get you, we're gonna get you there, Yuri. All right.
All right, Tanya and Valentina.
Thank you.
All right, next slide, sir. Okay, so, how is this, hit enter, Scott, see if this has animations. Let's see if that works. Oh, it does. Okay, so hit backspace. Sorry, I didn't know if this is PDF or not. All right, so I thought a quick, I don't know, I'm an economist. I like math and tables and graphs in Excel. So, to me, seeing stuff like visually helps me understand it. So, I thought I'd put these graphs in there. Maybe I'll help some of y'all the way it helped me. So, this first one is non-modulated base dues. So, under this example, and I'll show this mathematically in a few slides as well. This is saying that all, like, so material A and material B, there's different producers under each of these different materials. Could be, you know, cardboard and aluminum cans. It could be flexible films and boxboard, doesn't matter, like just two different materials. If we weren't looking at the cost to recycle, the revenues, the supply tons, all that stuff, we're just saying, we're going to take those system costs and everyone's gonna pay dues based on what they're supplying. Those dues will be the same. So, in this example, it'd be 15 cents per pound for every pound the producer supplies regardless of material A or B. It's the same. So, if you supply one pound, it's 15 cents, two pounds is 30 cents. But it's the same relative amount. Next slide. So, when we're looking at modulating or affecting the base dues based on things like the, their ability, their performance in recycling system as well as their commodity values, you result in differential dues by material category. So, in this example, material A is actually easier to recycle than material B. So, elements of it, the fact that maybe it's 3D and doesn't compress and it can go over screens, is easily sortable and maybe there's a magnet that pulls it off. So, it's easier to recycle, easier to separate and maybe at the end of the system, material A has a higher commodity value as well. So, not only can it recycle easier, it's got a higher value. That would result in material A having a lower relative due per pound than material B. So, this is like modulating at the, changing the material category level. Next slide, please, Scott. Then when we're looking at eco-modulation at the producer level, so this is saying for a certain producer of material A, I'll use that same example of the UBC, of the aluminum cans, UBCs, that one producer of UBCs decided to wrap their cans in a different label that is not recyclable. So, it impacts his performance in the stream or may impact his performance as a commodity value, could bring down that bail value. That individual producer of that material category is now paying a malice. So, their fee for that singular producer goes up. Conversely, there could be someone in material B that did some higher rates of PCR. So, they're beating the PCR standard, it's more post-consumer recycled content, they receive a bonus, so they went down. So, that's the difference of a not, like a flat fee, non-modulated versus the material category level versus at the producer level. And next slide, oh, one more and then I'll pause. Okay, so one other setup before we get to our approach. Things that hinted at a little bit, but that we have to consider while we're looking at our approach is one, producer data is not known. So, we haven't collected, we have yet to collect producer data. It's never happened. We don't know supply tons. We don't know what portion of, you know, we don't know PCR rates. There's a lot of things we don't know yet from producers. So, it's hard to set incentives and malices appropriately until we get this data. Similar what I was talking earlier, we haven't stabilized our operational budget to date because we haven't started to collect dues. We don't know what the, we, we're gonna have an idea in the program plan, but we won't publish final dues until October of 2025, once we get supply data for the first six months of 25. So, that is another challenge in saying the dues right away, the eco-modulation factors right away because there's a lot of data we don't know and the implications of saying these dues or malices at certain, sorry, incentives or malices at certain rates is unknown. Reporting is gonna be new to some producers in Colorado. So, a lot of our producers are, you know, participating in EPR schemes in other countries. So, some of them know how to report data. They might have some systems in other countries, but they haven't done in Colorado. They haven't done in the US. We know it's gonna take time to get this data and for allow producers enough time to develop their systems to accurately report data. When we're looking at things like setting eco-modulation bonuses or malices, we want to make it equitable. So, we talked a bit, I think it was two weeks ago, on PCR and what the impacts of some of that could mean on like, what if one producer has the resources to buy up all the PCR content? They can get the bonus and smaller producers might not have that same resources and they, that bonus is obtainable. So, are you creating a system that's equitable for all producers? Can everyone actually get that bonus? It can only some producers get it. If only some producers get it, they're just displacing their costs onto others. So, we gotta make, make sure that every producer has a way that they can participate in the program. And then lastly, if we're looking at truly making, we believe, if you're truly looking at making an impact with eco-modulation, we want to give time for producers to react. We just, we don't want free riders. We don't want producers say, hey, I already did that, give me a bonus. We want to do factors that are actually incentivizing behavior change. So, we want to give time for industry to react, so publishers bonuses and malices and give them time to make changes. All right, Scott, I think that's it, sir, for the first section and then we'll get into, you know, the details of our approach in the next section.
Okay, thank you, Yuri. And Brandon, thank you for putting it onto the questions. Just to let you know, Yuri, the, at times, you're sounding fine now, the internet, but is it just, the internet was a little bit off there slightly. So, Pete, I don't know, you might want to come in at a time, just if there's a problem with the internet, I'll let you know. But it's all good at this point.
Scott, I'm sorry, is my internet or my mic?
Well, I don't know. It seemed like internet to me, but let's not worry about it too much now because it sounds good at this point. But if you speak, you know, slowly and clearly up to the mic, I think that will, will be the best. All right, so let me just read the questions. The state law includes eight eco-modulation features or factors, excuse me, bonus and malice. Which ones are most important to you? Does the difference between material category and producer level modulation make sense? And third, what are, what other issues, data, reporting, budgeting, system change should CAA consider in the eco-modulation approach? Scott?
Thank you, Scott. I assume you mean me, Scott, so.
Scott the, Scott the Fife.
Thank you. Scott the Fife, Glass Packaging Institute. I'm gonna go back to the question that I had my hand up for a couple, Yuri. Thank you. I'm gonna go even before the discussion questions and go back to what I think is one of the most important things. I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to speak slower. One of the most important things that we discussed a couple of weeks ago or in the prior monthly meeting and that's the base fees in the first place and the proper allocation of the costs to the different material types amongst the base fees for systems design and trying to allocate all of the fees to a specific material rather than some fees for the entire system that improve the entire system. And I would argue, especially in the first five-year plan, especially in Colorado's system where a lot of the goals of the program is to extend recycling to places that do not have any. So, when you're extending new service to places that don't have service, all of that benefits everybody that's in the stream, right? And it's very difficult to allocate a truck, the cost of a truck to a specific material or the, you know, if it's never even been there before. So, you've got base fees. Eco-modulation is critically important. but only really works if we get the base fee right in the first place. And we know that, or we know, I will say, we know. Uh, maybe not everybody, uh, realizes, but as as, uh, Rick actually asked me directly in one of the last meetings, are we okay with the way that we, that we heard things being laid out in the first place? And I said, no, um, because we know that a couple different decisions have been made or at least are being considered. Um, number one, from the needs assessment, we know that the glass in the system is less than five percent of the entire volume of the system, but more in terms of the weight. Glasses circular within Colorado. But the decision that's being made to have glass largely in single stream is very specifically damaging the value of the glass, increasing the contamination of the glass and harming glass in all of these other ways that you're gonna assess the different material categories because of the system design that has been picked. Uh, and that is unfair particularly to, I'll just say it because I represent glass, unfair to glass. I, we could design, we could use a different material in any other different category. So I need to know that the base fees are gonna start properly before I can really give you, you know, all my final answers on whether I think that the eco modulation works at a material level or versus a producer level.
Got it.
And I can, I can go into greater detail, but I'll stop there.
Yeah, okay, that's a good place to pause. Uh, I see Pete, you have your hand up here, uh, likely in response. I don't know, Rick, if yours is in response, uh, or want to get on to this, uh, issue or a different one. But Pete, why don't you answer here Scott's question, please?
Um, yeah, thanks, Scott. Um, yeah, so appreciate the, uh, weight versus volume question. And I think we'll, we'll look at that as we look at, um, uh, the various costs within the system, within the the base dues and how that that gets allocated. Um, you know, I wanna be, uh, I think a little bit clear though on, um, you you know, the question of single stream versus dual stream, which is, um, you know, to some extent, the pro is making a decision right now based on the system that is currently in place in Colorado, which is, you know, uh, whatever ninety percent of the system or more is based on a structure that is a single stream. Uh, so that was a consideration that was taken into account, uh, as part of, uh, the initial needs assessment that was done. It it was also very clear within the legislation that we needed to take into account, uh, you know, the existing infrastructure and the existing system in place. Um, I I guess I'm just, you know, if we were, uh, to to move to a dual stream system across the 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 state, there would be significant costs, uh, associated with that in moving the entire system in a different direction to which it's operating right now.
Pete, I, um, am I okay to respond?
Yes, please.
Pete, I certainly understand that. What I'm saying is that the, and I'm, I'm not necessarily even arguing for dual stream across the entire, we had that debate. It's already done. It's, you know, the, 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 the design, the choices are what what they are. Um, it has a particularly different effect on some materials versus other materials. It has a particularly detrimental effect on all of the other things that are gonna go into your fee setting for your different producers. And as I argued several times during the needs assessment part of our, our dialogue, to even have studied it, to know what the collection, the collection cost would be higher, but your processing costs would be lower. Your yield would be higher, your material value would be higher and all of other things. But and whether they were studied and not published or not studied, we still don't necessarily know because it wasn't made public in the, in the needs assessment in the plan. Right? That, and that's everybody's prerogative, but it is what it is. I I don't try to relitigate whether dual stream is better than single stream, but now that the decision has been made, I think you need to take into account the particular nature of the damage to the certain materials that by choosing the system that you've you've sought. And in the first several years, most of the costs are going to be about expanding service to places that don't have service period, and that helps everybody.
Okay.
Every material.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Rick?
Uh, yes, Rick Cater, Swordfish Consulting, representing MRFs. Um, well, back to the, just to speak to Scott's, uh, discussion about two-stream versus single-stream. Man, when we did this transition from two-stream to single-stream back in the day, that was fifteen plus years ago. There was about a thirty to thirty-five percent savings in just collection costs alone, which was a huge, huge number in those days. So I'm sure it's a, it's further a huge number, uh, now. Um, but we are where we are. So my question, uh, to to the team is, uh, when you, when it comes to bonuses versus malices, let's use your example of aluminum, which is going to be a bonus of a fraction or stream, fraction of the stream flowing through our plant. How do you think that, so let's say, um, the small, uh, brewers can't afford big, uh, lot production of aluminum cans. So they're forced into using the PET wrap, uh, on on the aluminum cans. It's an economic thing for them. How, in a, in an environment where the aluminum can is in a plus category, a bonus, how, is, is there, are you looking at, okay, aluminum can as a stream fraction gets a bonus? And then the malice for the PET cover is going to be subtracting from that positive? Or meaning, do you have, you can have both in play or it's either or? You're either in a bonus category or you're in a malice category. In this case, the PET guys would be in a malice category and they'd be highly incentivized to move away from PET, uh, wrapping. It, it, so can you, can you explain that process?
And it's, um, yes, Rick, and good, good question. It's a little bit getting a little bit of a preview of the next set of slides, but it's a good segue into it. So, um, both will be working at the same time. So the fact that in this example, UBCs could are, uh, relatively easy to recycle and have a high commodity value. The aluminum cans, entire material category aluminum cans would have a due that is lower, relatively lower than other materials in the stream. So all aluminum cans get that, get that benefit. If there's an individual producer within that of aluminum cans that decides to do the PET wrap, that individual producer will get the malice applied. So everyone's getting the the benefit of high recyclability, high commodity values, all the things to make, you know, could give the lower due. Um, and part of the way I say it's a, um, preview what's to come is what, you don't have to change the slides, Scott. It's not like some big secret. We're proposing a phase approach where we start with the, you know, the material category first, saying, let's, you know, adjust the, the dues. So, um, aluminum cans or UBCs have taken account all the things that make recycle and that could result in a lower relative due for all aluminum cans. Collect data, give industry time to respond and report data and say, in, you know, X year, if you are in the aluminum can and decide to do a PET wrap, you're gonna get a malice. But the challenge in that is everyone has to report all of the data because malice, you can't just like, we aren't gonna say self-report on a malice and we're gonna charge you more. Everyone has to report all that information, all their labeling, which is gonna take time to get that. But if we went that route, it would take time to get that data out there, collect the data and impact the dues. And and Pete, I don't know, Pete, if you got other things to add on that or if, uh, or not.
No. Uh, okay, I know we do, uh, Brandon, the next slide is what what Yuri was was getting into here about a proposed phase approach that CAA is proposing. Um, so I don't know, Yuri, if you wanted to say a little bit more about, about.
Let's, uh, let's go to the next slide, Scott, if you'd be so kind.
So it's, it's Brandon that's that's doing the slides here, but we're, yeah, okay, it's.
Um, so Rick, yeah, thanks for asking that question because it does get to like how like, you know, producer level versus material category level. How can we make this work in Colorado while, um, following the the law? We have to follow the state law. So what we are considering now, and we're looking for feedback from, you know, from the consultation, from you all, from industry, CDPHG, we still have, you know, we're continuing to meet with Wolf and Darl and their team, um, on how to make this work because it's eco modulation is not easy. And Scott, you bring up some good questions. This is not, it's complex. It's not easy stuff, man. Um, so two phases. Phase one will be using, uh, factors in the base due setting methodology that would result in modulation of the base dues for six of the eight Colorado factors. So if you recall a couple of slides back, we said there was eight, there was five incentives, three malices. We believe that all three malices will be covered by this, uh, base de-modulation approach. And that three of the five incentives would be, but I'll share in a moment. Two of the five incentives we don't think can be covered through this approach. It just doesn't, you can't do the material category readily do it at a material category level. We would start with phase one immediately. So when those dues come out in October twenty-five and begin being collected in twenty-six, it would include this approach. The phase two is looking at ways to go for producer level eco modulation. So this is kind of what you're asking about, Rick, is how like the individual producer with that PET wrap, how are we gonna, you know, impact that producer? Or conversely, how can we incentivize someone to do something better, like add more PCR and beat the average? Um, so some of this, so within this too, and we'll found out if anything you want to add on this. I know we're talking about it, but Solid and Hazardous Waste Commission will promulgate the rules for eco modulation, bonus and benchmarks and scheduled by the end of twenty twenty-five. Those will go into effect in twenty-six or be published or live in twenty-six. Um, within our plan, we will propose to develop this roadmap to introduce producer level eco modulations. We develop a more, um, more detailed roadmap by working with industry and CDPHG to say, how can we get this producer level data out there, producer level eco modulation? So within this, the steps that we need to do is develop and publish reporting guidance for producers. So if we're doing something around labels, we'd want to make sure producers know that they have to collect that data and report it to us. So we do report, publish that guidance. We would ask producers to take one year, take one year to gather that data because all we're reporting is annual. So they gather data, we publish the guidance, producers would collect data for a year. Then they would report that data for that year on Q two of the following year. So we're anticipating the data from like, uh, I don't know, if we'd already done this from twenty, I don't know, twenty twenty-seven will be reported in Q two, like May of twenty-eight. So the whole annual year is reported the next Q two. Then we would take that data that is submitted by the producers on their supply tons and the potentially detailed data that would impact eco modulation factors, put that data into the methodology to develop the dues and publish those dues in October of that same year that the data was reported. Those dues will go into effect the following January. So it's publish the guidance, collect data, data is reported, the reported data is used to, uh, publish the dues. The dues go into effect the following calendar year. So that's kind of the process it will take, we believe, to go for eco modulation at the producer level. Um, alright, I will go to, um, to how we propose doing some more of this. Next slide, please. Alright, so base de-modulation, get into a little bit of the calculations here. And Scott, you might have questions I can't answer today. Um, if they come up, let me and Scott DeFay, let, let us know, send to me in writing. We can get a call with, you know, and this goes for anyone. We get a call with other experts and further discuss, um, any of these questions. So there was five, if you may recall, there's five incentives in statute. There's three on this list. These are the three that we believe can be modulated at the base due level or taking account in the base dues. So reductions in the amount of packaging material used for products. Um, so we believe this is taken into account in base dues and I'll show how this mathematically in a moment. But if you are producing a bunch of, uh, water bottles and you decide to make those water bottles with thinner walls and so you're selling less supply tons into the state than you were, you get a, you get an incentive here because you're, the supply tons are decreased. Your source reduction is taken into account because there's less tons of it going in. So if we're doing source reduction, reducing the amount of material, we believe it takes into account reductions in the amount of packaging material used for products in the base dues. Um, innovations and practices that enhance recyclability or commodity value of covered materials. So, um, packaging material that's highly recyclable or moves through the system effectively will be taken into account as well in those base dues. So we believe we addressed that one. And then high recycling of covered materials, same thing as higher recyclability, you get higher commodity values. Uh, you could pay less dues. We also believe there's an issue in looking at this at the, um, eco modulation in that, uh, recycling rates need to be measured at the program material level. It's really challenging or not, not really practical to measure individual producer brand level recycling rates. So we're looking at individual producer for, um, eco modulation. It'll be hard to say producer of aluminum can A got a higher recovery rate than with, uh, producer of aluminum can B. You'd have to do a lot of work, lots of rotation, RFID testing. It'd be really challenging. And we also know, Rick, I'm sure you've done this a bunch, try to look at the end of your recycling stream and figure out what the package was, what started. It can be really hard to figure out what that package was when you look at the backend. Um, so that's a challenging one to do at the producer level. Next slide, please. Um, we do believe all three malices will be taken into account in the base due setting approach. Um, so designs and practices that increase the cost of recycling, reusing or composting. So producers playing packaging that's costly to manage would pay higher dues. So, uh, something that is friable, breaks apart, it gets all over the MRF. It's really, that thins, takes up a lot of room, has a low value, something like that would have a higher, presumably have a higher due than something that is not, once it goes through this methodology. Um, disrupting the recycling of other materials, uh, producers supplying action with disruptive attributes would be impacted in the base dues because that is taken into account as well. And then this last one is slightly unique and I'll show us in the math in a moment. Producers using cover materials that are not on the minimum recyclable list. If you look back, Scott, like ten slides back, one of the factors said you must, uh, packaging not on the MRL must pay higher average dues. Yeah, thanks, Brandon. Here you go. Producers using cover materials that are not on the MRL, the last bullet on the malices. So it's listed. So producer, so those packaging types would have an average due that is higher than ones on the MRL. If it turns out that at the end of the due setting methodology that one of those packaging types does not have a, a, um, a due that is higher than something on the MRL, we'll include a factor to make sure that they are higher than MRL. So there's a disincentive to have something that's an additional material list. Um, thanks for jumping around, Brandon. Appreciate it. Alright, so how does this work? Um, there's kind of three factors in there, supply, share supply tons. So this is kind of taking into account that, uh, the source reduction, so less tons supplied impacts it or more tons supplied impacts, uh, and it's relative. Uh, so the cost to manage index, so the material cost variation, we realize this exists by incorporating material-specific costs in the season generated by ABC or activity-based costing model. ABC is something that EPR programs have done across Canada and other jurisdictions. And that's what we're looking at for the cost to manage, basically like a, a way to account for cost in the manufacturing product process. And looking at recycling is manufacturing. So what are the actual like activities and what are the labor hours and the, the equipments? Pie and all that stuff. What's it take to actually recycle something from curb to the end of the MRF through this ABC system? And that's part of what goes into the cost to manage index, which will be a relative index, whereas one material would be relatively higher than another. So it's not an actual cost, it's a relative index. Um, and then lastly, revenues are attributed to materials in this due setting methodology. So material with a higher revenue or, uh, more beneficial revenue that is also taken into account and that impacts the dues. Next slide, oh, um, go back, I'm sorry, Scott, there's one other comment, Brandon, there's one other comment. Um, we did talk a bit about reuse and refill. Uh, they are not required to pay dues. So eco modulating reuse and refill is kind of unique because there is no dues, it's zero. So they're, they're eco modulating, they are paying dues. So we'll talk about that more in future phases, how we can include, include the required eco mod factors on reuse and refill through case study approaches. Cause we do want, I mean, we're big advocates of it, we want to find ways to encourage it. Uh, next slide, please. All right, um, all numbers in here are fake. So don't get, please don't get hung up on any of these numbers. Nothing in here is from Colorado. These are not actual cost to manage index numbers, these are not supply tons. This is simply to give an illustrative example of what this could look.
Yuri, you just muted your, whoops, someone uh others are muted? Somehow everyone, there you go.
Okay, so I don't know if you heard this, everything on here is fake. Um, these are not real numbers, these are not representative of Colorado. Uh, the reason we put this in there is on this, I'm one of the people that likes to do the equations myself. So I like put this stuff into Excel and divide it and multiply it and see how this works. So I thought this may be beneficial to share for people that like that type of learning. Um, but yeah, everything in this here is fake. These are not the final categories, there's only five on here. There's gonna be over fifty material categories. So it's gonna be significantly larger and more granier, the category is not gonna be paper. Okay, um, so where does some of these factors we talked about come into play? So the first one on, starting on the left, supply tons. Um, so that is looking at that source reduction. So you take the supply tons, look at the total and multiply it times the total system cost. In this dummy example, a hundred fifty million. Paper is twenty seven percent of the supplied tons in this dummy example. Twenty seven percent times a hundred fifty million is forty one point two million. So you're taking the supply tons, the proportion of it, relative proportion, multiplying it time, the system cost to get that material management cost dollars. Next thing is we are applying the cost to manage index, the C T M. That's where you start to take into the incentive of innovations to enhance recyclability. Cause the C T M is looking at the activity based costing, what it actually takes to recycle a material. Um, things that are harder to recycle, that's impacted here. And, and materials that may disrupt recycling, that will be impacted in the cost to manage index. In this example, um, paper has a relatively low cost to manage index compared to flexible films, which has a significantly higher cost to manage index in this example. So when we multiply those two together, you see that the paper costs are now down from forty one million to nine million. And the flexible films went from thirty seven to sixty three. So that cost to manage is once again modulating those, those dues to reflect the actual uh what takes to recycle material. Um, at the end, you are dividing that total cost a hundred fifty million by those different numbers to get the end of supply chairs to get these, you know, the cost per ton for different materials. If we were to just do it straight up, if we took the um two hundred eighteen thousand tons, the very far left, two eighteen, five hundred, we took a hundred fifty million divided by two eighteen, five hundred, that's six eighty six a ton. That's, that's supply only. So we're just saying, we take how many tons are supplied, dividing it, everyone's paying six eighty six a ton. Everyone's gonna pay that same flat due regardless of your material category. When you take into account supplied tons and the cost of manage index, you see the paper goes from six eighty six down to one forty eight. So it's modulated significantly because there's not as much paper support. There is a lot of paper supply, but the cost to manage index is lower. Um, it's a lot of nerdy math. If you want to play at this at home, that's why, I don't know, I take stuff like this, put it into my own Excel table and do the math and kind of have, takes me a minute to learn how it works. Um, I'll do one more, Scott, and then maybe uh Scott Casella, maybe it's a good spot for me to pause. Cause there is one more factor in here, the revenue. So that was supply tons and then we got into cost to manage, but then we're also looking at revenue. So in this example, paper, the revenue on the index is forty five, so we take that into account. The rigid plastics actually have a pretty good revenue, two hundred uh in this example. So when we take into the revenues, it changes that system cost of a hundred fifty million. It brings it down to one thirty eight, the one fifty in this example. It's just a total system cost, what's the cost to manage? But we know we're selling commodities at the backend, making some, making some money. It reduces that system costs, brings it down. And so we're taking that into account in the base do setting methodology. On the bottom right, Scott and team is the final modulation example. So in this, if it was the supply tons only divided by this two hundred eighteen thousand tons supplied, a hundred fifty million divided by two hundred eighteen, it's six eighty six. But papers modulates significantly, it's changed by negative five sixty five, reduced by eighty two percent. So paper in this example has a relatively lower um base due. The last factor is that number eight, material not on M R L. So if there's material not on their M R, M R L, there will be this additional factor to ensure that it's um, that the additional material list is at or more expensive on average than materials on the M R L. So there would be additional factor to make sure that they're more expensive. The dues are relatively higher, sorry. All right, I will stop and seems like there's some questions, Scott.
Okay, I don't know if you want to.
Might have stopped in the presentation, oh yeah.
Yuri, if you, yeah, there you go. All right, thank you, Brandon, for the slide. So here you see, any concerns with this approach? Um, you know, do you support the proposed phase approach uh that starts with modulation at the base due level and moves toward additional eco modulation at the individual producer level over time? I'm sure there's questions or comments to give back to C A A here for these two, but maybe some clarification questions. So let's go for Scott the fight first. Rick, uh Wolf, let me um take you out a turn here if you'd like to um do that, I'll give you the prerogative.
Thanks, Scott. Um, thi- this is just a quick clarifying question, uh Wolf Cray, C D P H E. Yuri, could you just kind of explain a little bit more on the revenue? Exactly like what that is and where it's coming from and just kind of explain how that works and also like when that would be assessed? Is that um mill revenue from the previous calendar year or current quarter? Or how, how are you guys factoring that?
Yeah, so I, I will do my best to answer this. Uh, Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have, we do not have Alex, our fee setting subject matter expert on. So unlike the reimbursement where we're looking at like value change, we know that um commodity values change frequently. You know, daily, right? So when we're looking at reimbursements, the, the formula for cost reimbursements for processors is gonna be variable. It's gonna take into account those variabilities and the fluctuations of commodity values. For the do setting, this is like a one-time exercise, so it happens annually. So we are looking, we're proposing, or we're looking at the previous calendar year. Cause we gotta use a fixed point, it can't change, we don't want dues to change every day. So this would be like a fixed commodity value on an index from a commodity index. Um, where it comes into account is kind of where it shows up in that uh do setting formula. So at the, the end of the formula, do the other steps first and saying, um, you know, there's the, the total, we estimate the total system costs are actually, once we get the real budgets and we're running the program, we know the total system cost, right? The year one, we're have to do some estimations, year two, we know the system cost. Um, figure that out and then we take out what the revenues were and say, okay, it was a hundred fifty million, there's ten million made to the actual system cost that C A had to pay was a hundred forty million. And not a hundred fifty, cause there was some money come back into the system. So it comes at the end and that's what the dues are paying for is the, the net cost.
Answer the question, Wolf?
Clarify, Wolf?
Yeah, I think so. And, and just for, I guess this is maybe assumed by all, but the revenue would be the Murph's getting paid for the commodities that they're selling to downstream markets.
Yeah, that's not like money into C, this is like a, a, a do setting model. This is not like money into C A coffers.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Scott, uh Dee, uh the Fife, sorry for that, so uh their turn now.
Let Rick go first.
Rick, okay, Rick, you're up.
Okay, Scott, we'll go. I have uh three quick ones. Um, understanding uh and that cost to ma- is it Rick Cater, Swordfish Consulting, Murph, sorry. Uh, the cost to manage index, the varying systems and the related costs. So I'm assuming uh the unit cost to collect a bottle in rural areas will be much higher than the unit cost uh to collect and process on the front range. So I'm assuming you're gonna have a blended cost uh that these uh uh packagers are gonna pay into. That, that's just, I want verification of that assumption. My second, second question is, how are, uh, so I heard you say that um non-M R L items that come through the system or that are collected, uh but more, more likely come through the Murph are, are somehow uh absorbed, that cost is then factored into all of the M R L uh participants in the Murph in a blended fashion. So that's how that residue cost is covered for the Murph. Uh, I, I gotta assume you're doing that. And then the third one, and I'll cut out is, um, let's say.
Do you wanna, I'm sorry, sorry to jump in. Uh, Yuri, do you want all three of the questions or would you like to break them down?
Assumption one is good, it will be a blended, you're right on the assumption, Rick, but if we want to, I, if you want to get more into C T M, let me know and I can get our experts here. So I don't want to speak out of turn and Pete, I'm not sure how deep you can go into the C T M with this group. Um, but yes, so good on this assumption.
This is specifically on materials that aren't on, that aren't being collected? Is that what you're asking, uh that may be potentially um still making their way through a Murph?
No, that's the, that's what was the second question, I should have.
So question one, your assumption is good, Rick, and sorry, tiny, I was speaking over someone. Uh, assumption is good on question one. Question two on, yeah, so question two, can, that was um, how residual is it the Murph? And from additional materials are accounted for?
Yes, sir, how, how, those flow through the Murph, they are considered a residue product. And then, uh, but it is a cost, so uh how are we sharing, uh, how are the packagers sharing that cost? If we are being a hundred percent compensated at the Murph level?
Uh, Rick, that's a good question, man, I might have to cogitate on that one for a minute um and get back to you. Um, unless Pete, you can answer that one quickly, I'm, I'm confused by it.
So, so Rick, the uh costs of materials that are not actively collected, I'll, I'll, I'll call it that way, that we're not actually trying to capture, uh will be assessed a higher fee than any other material within the, the, the category. So they will receive a higher fee um, um, uh based on other covered materials that are, are caught in that category. So it'll be assessed the highest uh fee, that's the way that that will be uh taken into account. Um, the uh, the residual materials at a Murph are based, are built into uh the total system costs uh that would be budgeted for and then will be allocated to uh, uh, to each of the materials, right? So if the total system costs are two hundred million, um, and I don't know, five million of that is, is just residual cost that's built into the overall cost and that gets allocated uh, uh, um, as a result.
Thank you. And then the third one was the, like a flex film kind of material. If we go to, if we go to, uh, let's say we accept it at some point in time and it becomes a take, a take back material rather than a Murph material, but ends up flowing through the Murph, that flex film, uh, you, you kind of answered it in the second question. So I'm assuming the flex film folks will be absorbing that cost, you will take that into consideration.
Correct, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick and Pete and Yuri for the answers to those questions. Uh, let me ask if there are any feedback on these two broader questions in terms of phasing the approach, the general approach that C A A uh I assume will be proposing here moving forward. Wolf and then Barrett.
Thanks, Scott. Wolf Cray, C D P H E. Um, so to go back to the phased approach, as of right now, the plan is to implement six of the eight eco mod factors from the get-go with two of those going in the phase two approach. Those two factors, if I am looking at this correctly, would be the high level of PCR material use and design for reuse and refill of covering materials. Um, oh, I'm sorry. PCR is now.
No, those are right, PCR and reuse and refill, yes, sir.
Great, great, great. So uh I guess the question, just for clarification, is the concept is to kind of phase that in based upon getting more data, cause you need data to make decisions. Uh, would that phase two approach still be laid out within the plan proposal?
Yes, that, that's what we're thinking, but we, um, you know, part of the conversations we'd had, right, W- Wolf with you and Darlin, C D P H E is like, we still, I don't think we're totally aligned on like the timeline for it yet. And so there is no timeline in this presentation, so we, we want to figure out, um, yeah, the timeline is still up in the air, so we need some input. I think we're searching for additional input on what a realistic timeline could be for developing that. So we would propose in that, um, that's what we're proposing to propose, is that we put into the plan, like here is our approach and the timeline for phasing in these two additional factors that we can't do in the base dues. And then looking at ways we can move to producer level uh eco modulation for other factors as well. Um, and I'll talk in a moment on why we do believe that PCR and reuse and refill just can't be accommodated in those base dues. It'd be great to where it's just like, I don't think it, we can possibly get them in the base dues. Um, and we're open, man, like if, for everyone on this call, if there is other ways to do it or ways we can get this data, like, we'd love to hear some, we'd love to hear some support, yeah, or new ideas.
Okay, thank you, Wolf, for the, the question, uh Barrett?
Uh, yeah, good morning, uh Barrett Jensen, Waste Connections, uh Landfills with Recycling. Uh, Yuri, to kind of answer that question just a little bit is, you know, take all the time you need. Um, so don't, don't, don't rush it too much. Um, my question is, and this may be a little too far in the weeds, is, you know, this applies to the, what we're gonna see probably is right about fifty materials on the M R L, the materials recycle, our minimum recyclables list. So in the future, if this is the approach that's approved and that you're gonna do, the additional materials list or anything in the future after that, would they adhere to the same approach where it could take two or three years or would they be automatically adopted into this approach?
So uh, um, so Barrett, when we publish the dues in, in next year, so we, we will be um, sharing reporting guidance, this is, so we'll be sharing, here's the reporting categories this year for Colorado. Cause we gotta like start giving some heads up to um industry, what we're going, ask them to report in August of next year for the first six months of twenty five. So in August of next year, uh producers will be required to report the first six months of twenty twenty five for all materials, not just minimum recyclable additional materials, they're for all, every covered material. So all covered materials, so the fifty something categories is all covered materials. When we produce the dues in October of next year, it's not just M R L or A M L, it's all covered materials. So every material is gonna have a due on it by material category. What I'm talking about for the phased approach is like within one of those material categories, is there a way that like if you have more PCR than your other producers of box board, can that individual producer get an additional bonus? So that's the one that's phased, but the material, all dues are gonna be produced or published for all covered materials and all dues will begin, being collected in January twenty six. And all dues will begin, being collected in January twenty sixth for all covered materials.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Barrett. Uh, Pete, you had your hand up. Is it clarified already from what Yuri mentioned? Okay, sounds good.
What did I say wrong, Pete? Just say.
No, you got it. So I, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, okay, uh, Scott, the Fife. Um, we do have a few more slides to go through that do get into exactly what we're talking about here. Um, so I want to make sure that we get to those so that it helps to explain some of the things that we're talking about. But Scott, please go, go first.
I think I know exactly what we're talking about. Okay, I mean, Scott the Five Glass Packaging Institute, I'm going to go back to the chart. And back to the point that I made earlier, the, you are introducing by the system that you have chosen, contamination into what is called the glass stream. You are breaking the material and sending it down and introducing other other contamination into the glass stream. It is lowering the, the value of the material, whereas if the value, if the material was collected separately, it has higher, higher and positive value. And that is particularly damaging to certain materials by the system design that you've picked. Activity based costing is also a choice. It is also often done in places that separate streams more than what we're doing here. And it is very difficult to transition that from jurisdictions that have different collection systems than what Colorado is introducing here. So, I mean. You know, the, the malices aren't, the mouses and the bonuses aren't even going to matter. And I would argue that you're subs, you're using fees on glass and flexibles to subsidize the other materials. By doing it in the system design that you're doing it.
Yeah, go ahead, Pete. And I just wanted to mention Alex Chan from C A A has just joined us here. So that the, so Yuri and Pete, you know, Alex is with us now. Okay, Pete.
Perfect, Scott. I just, just to you briefly, I, I'm, your, your suggestion or your recommendation is, is, is what? Is what, what is the recommended approach that you're, you're providing as to what the approach we should take is? I think you need to factor in the way that you're handling the material. But, but what does that mean? Into the, that its impact on the different materials that are in the system. So what's fine, when it's in, when it's collected a certain way, the glasses becomes difficult in the manner that you're handling it, especially in the trucks that pick it up and, and, and things of that nature. It's not. You collect a glass separately or a film separately. Let's not talk about glass. We can talk about film. Film. We, we talked about this often, Rick. Film, the Murphs don't want the film in the single stream Murph anymore. Then they want the other more, you know, the stuff that doesn't fit that system. Okay, the material that's separately collected from a community that collects material on the side doesn't fit that model that you just put up for the single stream Murphs. I get it that collecting costs are higher the more streams you have. But as we discussed again, I don't want to relitigate it. You've made choices. The choices you've made are specifically damaging to certain materials in a unique way.
I, I think it's a, it's a fair statement, Scott. As long as the choices are not, you're necessarily seeing it, saying that C A A made those choices. I think it's collectively the state of Colorado, operators and cities and counties have made choices to develop a recycling system that we are charged with figuring out how to pay for through pros. It's, um, we didn't make the choice in Boulder County twenty five years ago to switch to single stream. I was, I was in Boulder, but I didn't make that, I didn't get the opportunity to make that choice. I think that's one of our challenges is it's, there's a system that we're inheriting here in Colorado.
Absolutely, Yuri. But also, when Boulder made that choice, Boulder taxpayers paid for the collection separately and then handed it off and the, the private sector market got to deal with the commodities after that, right? So in an E P R system, when the producers are paying for the whole thing, not a shared model or anything like that. Again, when I, when we were going back earlier this year or last year, when we were talking about even studying the impact of different collection streams on the end result of the cost of the entire system and the performance of the entire system, those studies weren't done in the needs assessment, or if they were, they weren't reported out in the needs assessment as having been studied. No dials were turned to study separate collection of anything, my, our material, film or anything in any of the, uh, in any of the models that were chosen to be studied and reported on.
So, so, so one of the recommendations perhaps is to consider multiple stream collection, doing, you know, pulling glass films and perhaps multiple other materials out. Because it, because it's possible that same argument could be made for, you know, materials that get compressed or load into the fibers by accident, like, because it could, it might not be only glass that's impacted, right? So we.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the, the other thing is to figure out how to account for the damage that the collection system is doing to the material in the first place before you charge the material for all of the results of the system that's being done.
Makes sense.
Let me ask Alex from C A A to come in. Alex, do you want to have a comment on this particular question?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Scott. Alex Chan, C A. Um, we are in developing the fee setting approach, we are looking to follow the, the statute requirements as much as possible. So.
Actually, it doesn't say activity based costing. I'm sorry, Alex, it doesn't.
Um, no, the statute says the producer dues need to vary by the type of card material and to be based on the recycling service costs of each covered material in the state. And so just recognizing that the system design will be different in each state. I don't know how class is being handled in Colorado, but if glass is being handled separately, through separate channels that are more costly, um, the C T M would have to reflect that. Um, and then those costs will be reflected in class fees. If glass is being collected, single stream, co-mingled, then this C T M would also try to reflect that. So we, we're just trying to follow the statute saying and reflect operational realities on the ground um, of what's happening in this state.
Can I ask Alex, uh, and this may, this may be a much, well, clearly a much longer conversation. But, um, you know, Scott's talking also about projections or, you know, the, the, the costs, like the needs analysis. And I, this is where, you know, I, I don't know, and we're at a process, a part in the process that is far along. It's, it was not done, uh, as Scott was saying, it's not done in the needs assessment that, uh, that was talked about, the investments needed for dual stream. Right now, there's a, there's going to be a program plan that's put forth. Is there an opportunity moving forward for the scenarios to be developed a little bit?
I, um, I, I defer to Pete and Yuri on this. I, I think it would be part of the program plan that we'll be looking at system design. But I, it's not part of my domain. If Pete, Pete, Yuri, you could maybe talk about that.
Yeah, I guess we'd, I'd want to understand that more, Scott, like, uh, is it to like look at develop transitioning of Colorado from single stream to dual stream or what the.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I, I just need to understand it more before I can weigh in because I don't, um, it's not an easy set of work to do.
Let's not talk over one another. So Yuri, you speak first and then, uh, you know, Scott, uh, and then, and I want to just keep on to, with Alex, the C A A responses, and then we'll go to Rick and Gail here. But it is a long conversation. So let's start with Yuri.
And but yeah, before we can commit to that, I'd like to, to better understand, that is not an insignificant endeavor to say, what would it cause Colorado to change the system from what we have today to something else for collection and Murphs and processing? And the draft plan, uh, is due right around the corner. So, um. Yeah, man, we'd have to talk, we'd have to talk in more detail to see if that's a reasonable thing to do at this time.
Scott, did you have anything in, in response here other than there's a commitment here to talk more? And I'm taking that as after this meeting many more times, I'm sure.
I am trying to keep my advisory board hat here on system design issues that impact our material but other materials. And I am not suggesting that we go back to the drawing board and redo the needs assessment for dual stream across the entire state of Colorado. I am suggesting that there are specific decisions that are being made that impact in collection and processing that do things to the materials that the materials do not do in and of themselves.
Right. I'm sorry to just, I, I think.
And I'll stop and I'll.
Stop there because it's repeating what you said. And I think there's a, there's a, uh, there's a willingness to, to talk afterwards about it because it's such a big topic that you've raised, a very good one. So let's, um, let's go to Rick and then Gail. And perhaps then we move to the next section where there's a few more slides that are complimentary to the conversation we're already having.
Okay. Hi, uh, Rick, uh, Swordfish Consulting, uh, Murphs. I, I wanted to engage, uh, uh, Scott, uh, you, glass is kind of unique in that the pro or, uh, E P R is actually going to cover pre-processing your material. So I would, and this is just me, uh, thinking like a businessman. I, I guess I would increase my cost associated with, uh, pre-processing or processing the glass from the Murph so that you are compensated for the added cost on the fee structure. I, I'm sure it's not one for one. But at least in this case, it seems like glass has some cash back flow in that cleanup process that is associated with how it was collected, how it was processed and how it gets to your end market. So could, could you speak to that a little bit, Scott? And whether or not you think that might help you in this argument?
Rick, I, I, I appreciate it. I think I'm gonna just stop now and take our stuff offline. Until I have follow up conversations. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Gail.
Thank you, Gail Gary Steamboat Springs City Council, the local governments outside of the front range seat. Um, certainly, you know, very interesting discussion and, um, certainly, you know, understand uh, kind of, you know, all of the, the statements and concerns that are being stated. Um, I think, you know, kind of a question regarding the, kind of the total system costs and specifically a bit in response to your comments, Yuri, at the beginning of the call and the feedback that you're getting from the rural communities, um, you know, specific to infrastructure. And, um, you know, you know, I think even as it pertains to glass, I mean, it seems to me that's an infinitely recyclable product. So certainly doing what we can to make sure that it stays a valuable commodity makes sense. Um, certainly understand that we're working with a system that's in place, but also just hope that we would try to improve the system. Uh, you know, however or wherever possible. So to that, um, end, as we look at the rural communities and you, you, as I said, you heard from them that, you know, you know, us in the rural, rural areas that where, you know, a lot of communities are in the process of, you know, improve, you know, improving or, you know, looking at the infrastructure or even putting an infrastructure in place. So, you know, as we think about it, I think my question to you all is, you know, as you think about the total cost, would you encourage a rural community? And will you be thinking about it from the perspective of like drop off facilities and perhaps encouraging, um, an, a, a community that doesn't have in place, um, you know, single stream, maybe go to dual stream or uh, work to, you know, kind of separate out the different commodities?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um. Don't know the answer to it. I mean, I think it depends a little bit on the facility that that community is going to and the process it takes to get there. Some of those issues, um, that Scott's bringing up, even in like, I mean, if you're going to the transfer station that's getting dumped on a tipping floor and then reloaded, even if a material's collected separately, it can still break. So I think there's a, we'd have to look at individual cases to see like proper recommendation. Um, which is not a great answer, Gail. But I'd be happy to talk to you offline and we can like cogitate more on it, um, on what the best, you know, what the best solution is. What, as we're starting to like build toward like, you know, we got a lot of the what, and now we're starting to build like how, how, like, we still got to implement. There's a lot of like, there's a lot of technical things we still have to make this work operationally in Colorado and pretty short timeline. Um, so we're starting to look at, you know, behind the scenes and like what it's going to take to do those investments, where the investments needed. Like who needs new transfer stations? Where are they going to go? Which Murphs, where do we need new Murphs? So we're starting to look at like more into the weeds of that stuff. Um, but I don't have the answers yet. So, yeah, happy if you, if you want to talk, like, and same with anyone, call, call anytime. Happy to have discussions.
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd be happy to, again, Gail Gary Steamboat Springs City Council, I'd be happy to talk with you offline.
That'll be awesome.
Trying to understand, um, laying out what, you know, various different, as you've heard, lots of, you know, rural communities are facing different um, issues and, you know, and, and there's lots of questions in terms of timing as well. So is this something that, you know, you're, we are encouraging, uh, communities to move forward? Do, it does, um, the community need to wait, um, you know, from a reimbursement perspective? So would appreciate the opportunity to wash some of these issues out.
That'll be awesome, Gail. Yeah, call Scott if it's okay. Yeah, call anytime, Gail. It'll be great to talk about this in more detail. Um, anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I, Scott the Five, I want to thank you very much for raising such a, an important question, uh, here. I think it's really gotten a lot of people thinking, uh, further. And I think we're gonna, you know, we're gonna move forward here with the next couple of slides. Uh, but as, as Yuri's last comment was, there's going to be, they're, they're, they're going to be looking at the investments moving forward and that will be part of the plan. And I think there's more conversation about the timing. As Gail was mentioning, there's a lot of considerations. Uh, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I was, I'm sorry I didn't make my points clear when we were talking about the needs assessment options. This is exactly what I anticipated.
All right. Well, with that, Brandon, but let's go to the next slide and the next one after that. And I will hand it over, back over to Yuri.
Yes, and without speaking too fast, Tanya and Valentina, I'm going to do the next part relatively fast because there's only like two or three slides here and then we'll wrap this and get to the other topics that we have today. Uh, Wolf, this is what you're asking about, which ones can't, do we believe can't be modulated in the base dues? Um, so the P C R and design for reuse. Um, so we would have to phase those in. Let's just go to, let's go to the next slide. And this talks a little bit about, well. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about this one, talk about some of the why on the last one. So how this phase in would work at a high level? And some of the reasons why we're thinking it would need to be phased in is, um, shared some of this earlier, producers report on the previous year's data. And they produce, they report in like that Q two. So, um, in twenty twenty seven, producers will be reporting their twenty twenty six data. So that the year passes, they amassed the data, they reported in around Q two. Um, we've also looked, when we look at the timeline of this, we know we want to give producers guidance um, on what those eco modulation factors could be, how they could report um, and what they have to prepare to report. So we want to give them some time before the year starts to get ready to develop those reporting categories. I would hate to come at the end of the year and say, by the way, you guys have to report all this data from last year that you what, may have not been collecting. So we want to give that guidance ahead of time. And then lastly, I'm sorry, is, so we give them the guidance, they report on the, the year. Then we get to Q two, and that's all I was saying earlier, we take that data in Q two, apply it to the model and that will go into effect the following year. So we take the data, it's reported in. and that will go into effect the following year. So we take the data, it's reported in May, put it into that model, produce the dues and those dues get published in the fall, they go into effect the following year. So there is this little bit of timeline that no matter how fast we want to do it, does require some, you know, some phase, we believe does require some phasing. Um, there's not years on here and Wolf does a little bit while saying like, I do, would like, I would value some more time working with CDPHG to figure out, you know, and other stakeholders too, um, on what is an appropriate timeline for this. So hearing from producers on this call, others, what they think is a good timeline. Uh, next slide, please. All right. So, um, Alex, I'm going to do my best to repeat what you said. Alex, if I say something wrong, just chime in and let me know. So the, the PCR, we believe that the reason that, so you all saw the, um, the math on how we're doing the dues with the cost, the supply tons, the cost to manage and the commodity values. We don't see anywhere in that equation where PCR comes into account. You know, that's not, it doesn't change the cost to manage if it's got more PCR or less, doesn't really change the supply tons, doesn't really impact the commodity value. Ergo, cause the PCR doesn't feel like we can put it into those base dues. Um, we would be looking for data reporting. There is some challenges here. We talked a bit about PCR two meetings ago on what data is available from producers, what isn't, how they can track it, chain of custody certification. So we do believe there's a couple of things we'd want to work out in this roadmap of like developing the producer level eco-modulation, working with producers to say, okay, what can they report, what can't they to develop those factors for PCR. This is one of the areas where we also have some concern about equity. You know, does a singular firm that have a lot of resources buy up all the PCR? They get the bonus and other firm, other producers can't get that recycled content. So that bonus is less available to them. Or something like Rick was talking about, the supply chain, they just don't have control over it. So they can't hit those PCR. So we, how can we make this equitable? Um, reuse and refill, reuse and refill doesn't have a, have a base due, right? It's exempt. So we're looking at doing case studies is the way we're thinking about approaching this. It says, all right, producer, if you've done uh, reuse and refill, there's a bonus available for your other products. Um, and there'd be some type of, you know, verification and support data. It's more of like a one-off case study approach for this bonus. Um, and the same one for this, uh, producers that fund or operate a collection program that covers a specific type of government material that's not processed at the MRF. So if there's an item that there's just through drop-off, but it hits that collection rate, we'd be looking at that material to give that producer a reduced, a bonus for that too. So more of a case study approach. Uh, next slide. Oh, actually, Alex, anything I missed there? I know that you're pretty close to this stuff. Did I kind of channel my inner Alex? All right. Well, then we're done with that presentation. One more said, discussion questions, Scott, and then I can stop talking.
Thank you, Yuri. Uh, trying to take maybe 15 minutes with these questions. If we have some comments or questions, just raise your hand. Okay, Scott DeFave.
Um, I think we've talked about, sorry, sorry, Scott DeFave, glass packaging. I think we've talked about it particularly in the PCR world on data collection. It's going to take some time. You're talking about data that isn't collected largely by anybody, anywhere for materials outside of plastics, resins. Typically, I know that other people are counting, we count recycled content. Um, there has always been some sort of division in between internal scrap and anything that leaves the plant. Um, getting at the definition of pre-consumer, post-consumer. Is it filled and in the distribution chain, but never makes it to the consumer? That part, we've talked a little bit about that data. People are not collecting and discerning that, you know, now. So the, the ways that the brands and the, I'm sorry, the producers would get the data is got to come from a place that has the data. And so it's going to take a little bit of time. Um, you know, I, I, it's just not readily available today. So it, 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 it's not rocket science, but it is data collection that doesn't exist in the, in the, in the widely in the, in the supply chain right now. And I would, eh, again, I, I don't, not speaking for metals, uh, or paper, but I, in, in trying to do my job, I talk to metals and paper material groups often, and I, they have expressed to me similar similar things.
Scott, we have heard, we have heard that from other, we've heard that too. Um, so you're not out, out on the island on that one for that from other producers as well.
So it, uh, Alex, and then the, the thing, Yuri, if you want to, just one more time in terms of the timeline that you're proposing. Cause Scott's saying it's going to take time to get the data, particularly for data not collected now. Uh, or is that something you're proposing later for people to really visually see what the timeline is? So we know it's going to take time.
Excellent question, Scott. Um, we did not propose a timeline. So there were no dates. So good, good observation. Um, we are looking for feedback from this group, uh, as well as people listening. Send it to us, let us know your feedback. I know, and I know Wolf will be working closely with CDPHG as well on what is a appropriate timeline to ensure that we are in compliance with the state law as well. So there's, you know, some statutory requirements that we're facing too.
Yeah. I, I don't, uh, you know, we obviously don't have a timeline to respond to now, but seeing just something, even if it's like a straw, you know, proposal or something, or a hypothetical, or where people can see it and perhaps say yes, yes, no on that particular timeline. But let's hold that and go to Alex.
Pardon me. Uh, thanks, Alex. See, um, I, I think that great feedback from Scott on glass. Um, just wondering if you have, if you could provide insights in terms of the lead time you think would be required for your, for glass producers, let's say to capture this data and to get it prepared, ready, certified for reporting? Like that level of insight would be useful at least on the, on the glass stream.
Um, okay, I'm, I'm, I mean, I can try to give you, I can tell you what, what we have now. We can take it offline, Alex. I mean, certify, how many hurdles are we putting in? Is it pre and post? Is it certified and not certified? Who's doing the certification? You know, all of those will add time that we, the producers know how much collet, recycled collet is used when they make the new glass. We have national data, uh, as a trade organization, I would, I know that the Aluminum Association has national data as a trade association. I know that the, the AFMPA has national data as a trade association. Um, APR, I think does more of this for the plastics world, but I, you know, Scott Saunders is not here to, to speak to the plastic stuff. But the, for antitrust reasons, I can't tell you the precise recycled content in state X, you know, Y or Z, except for one or two occasions where California, CalRecycle collects the data themselves on the production inside of California and that's it. Um, most, if you need pre and post, then we've got to go to the processors who know where the stuff's coming from. Because once the material's in the processing facility and comes out the backside of the processing facility, no one can tell the difference between whether it was pre-consumer, post-consumer or not, right? And so we'd have to track, hey, is that, is that material come back through a distribution chain for a de-packing situation? You know, expired product that was on the shelf, um, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, Montreal, you know, um, we, I was just up in Quebec and we were talking about the same thing, you know, in Quebec with EEQ, right? It, yeah, how fine of detail do you want on the pre and post? Um, consumer, you know, designation and who has that data is different than how much actually goes back into making the new bottles.
Okay.
Let's go to Alex and then Gail. Alex? You just put yourself on mute.
I just had that one question.
Okay. Then your hand was up from before. I'm sorry. Uh, Gail.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Scott, Gail, Gary, Steamboat Springs City Council, local governments outside of the front range. And kind of listening to the conversation, one of the thing, what I'm hearing is, would it be helpful to try to get a sense from the, you know, the various different, um, entities for, you know, from a CAA perspective to just understand kind of what's being collected in terms of data today? And then, you know, identifying where the gaps are, or does, um, CAA kind of already have that data? Just trying to kind of figure out what the starting point is here.
So Gail, we are, that is a lot of the work we're doing behind the scenes, you know, just talking to trade orgs, uh, member, members of, uh, of C, of the pro, the founding members. So we are trying, we are getting that, uh, doing those consultations as well. Um, and learning new information daily. You know, I talked to ABA today or early this week and like, so we're getting great information and we continue to accept it and more input we get, the better.
And so, and you're, so you're, you're also getting that from, um, entities like, uh, Scott DeFave and glass packaging and, and from the, the plastics and, and the paper folks as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Pete, did you have another thing to add? Sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Gail, I mean, I think it's, we're just trying to understand what, what systems that producers have in place currently right now to track this information and sort of how much variation there may be between, uh, different, uh, different types of, of producers, potentially with different types of packaging. Uh, so we're just trying to make sure we understand because we need to put out guidances as, as Yuri's already stated, we've got to put out guidance ahead of time so that they can track that information over a year and do it in a way that we can actually verify it. And then, um, they need to report that data into us. So it's just making sure that we're taking into account all the various steps that need to be taken along that way.
Hmm. Okay. So maybe I'm, I thought I was hearing some sort of gap, but maybe I just misunderstood kind of the conversation. I'm going to be Scott DeFave in terms of kind of what you, what you, you know, what you were talking about. Um.
Um, I'm sorry, um, Gail, I didn't, Scott DeFave Glass Packaging Institute, um, what I was trying to say is different parts of the supply chain or their value chain have different pieces of data. No one's ever asked these questions of at least our industry before to, to, to really differentiate. Um, it, this is all a new concept. Uh, it, it, it's not as new in the plastic, plastics world as it is for the other materials. And it's not as if we don't track recycled content, but we don't cut the data as finely as, as it's being asked in the, in, in the law for post-consumer. Um, and so that is what, you know, takes time. And each material knows how to, for instance, for our material, the only place where anybody's going to know exactly how much is going back into the bottle is at the place where the bottle is, where the glass is made, right? For plastic resin, resin, plastic recycled resin is made and then it gets moved to a converter. And so if you're a brand or if you have some line of sight into the amount of plastic resin of different, different resin types that you're, you're purchasing, you know what you're, you, you have better line of sight into how much resin you're putting into the converting machine that's popping out the product. At the end, whether it was a hundred percent virgin or a hundred percent recycled content or some blend of the different components, right? Usually with PET bottles, you know, the, the, the lid, the, the cap and the, and the bottle are, are different so that they don't, you know, but so you track all of that. Canons, Canons Institute, the, the, the one part of the can and the top of the can are different alloys. So they know the difference between those two things and they're not the same, right? But with glass, we know how much recycled content we introduce into the furnace. But the glass producer does not know how much of it was pre-consumer and post-consumer other than that it was not internal scrap. And so we've got to go to the processor who can say, hey, I have 50,000 tons processed in my plant this year. 10,000 of that was from a pre-consumer distribution recovery mechanism that never touched the lips of, you know, Scott DeFave, when he drank a, drank a beer or not, whether that really, I would argue it doesn't matter. It's recycled glass that had to be processed. But the law may care, right? Um, or CAA may care, um, about pre and post-consumer. This is why these little definitions, you know, can matter and it, that data's never been cross-checked. Like if we make, if we use 50,000 tons of non内的 scrap post, you know, recycled content, we don't have any idea how much of that is pre or post-consumer. We know it's not internal scrap. We separate that out, right? Cause it never left the factory. But we don't know how much of it made it to a retail shelf or past a retail shelf or back from a recovery. So if you get what I'm, and the, and the pandemic exacerbated all of that because of, you know, the, the issues, you know, lots of issues that we can't go into here now. But, and every material is going to be, you know, slightly different. I'm just saying that this is a new, if you're going to standardize the, the definition across all the different materials, then we need to, that's going to take some more time. But if we, you work with each material based on what the data they have and how they can give it to you, then you can probably move faster.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, many of us were up in, uh, Canada for their Canadian Product Stewardship Conference and, uh, as Pete and, and Yuri and many others that have worked on this for a very long time, there's still, there's, there's still similar questions. They're further down the road, but nothing's, you know, fully clear and we're starting down a new path and there's a lot of things to work out here. Uh, and this is a really great discussion. So I just want to, you know, thank you all for, for that discussion. Uh, we're going to now take a five-minute break, um, and move to public comment on the first, uh, part here on the eco-modulation. We're going to, uh, come back, uh, afterwards. Um, and then we're going to talk about building circularity. So it's another, another topic and we will have another public comment period afterwards. Uh, Brendan, did you want to say anything at this point or you want to wait till we're coming back from the break about putting the name and affiliation into the chat?
Uh, thank you, Scott. Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a brief call out now before we hop into our break. So if you are interested in providing public comment or asking a question on the topic of eco-modulation, please, as Scott said, submit your name and organization in the chat. And we're going to call on attendees in the order that the requests were received. Since we have limited time, we're only going to allow for about two minutes for each comment. And if there's a question-answer period, we're going to moderate that based on the total number of people in the queue. So we can make sure everyone has a chance to participate. So with that said, Scott, we can go ahead and we'll start our break and then we'll, uh, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Brandon. So Ian Fife. Welcome back, everyone. Welcome back, everyone. Uh, I will now, uh, turn it over to Brandon for the first public comment period of today's technical work session. Brandon?
Thank you, Scott. Um, I do just want to give an additional call out here in case folks didn't hear, they didn't see in the chat. So if you would like to provide public comment or ask a question on the topic of eco-modulation, please submit your name and organization in the chat and we'll call on you in the order of the requests that we receive them. Since we have limited time, we're only going to allow for two minutes for each comment and Q and A periods are going to be moderated based on the number of folks in the queue. So everyone can participate here. So with that said, we have our first public commenter, which is Peter Beerbaum. Uh, Peter, please go ahead and unmute, say your affiliation and provide your comment or ask your question.
Thank you. Uh, Peter Beerbaum, One World Resource, uh, small business waste management and circularity consultant. I wanted to compliment Circular Action Alliance on the 10 consultation sessions held for Colorado. Just very informative for stakeholders, allowing clear opportunity for input. And I would just suggest, please consider the approach for other states, in particular California. I support most of CAA's thoughtful program. I have one suggestion and that's that, um, fostering equity, accessibility and environmental justice should be considered a guiding principle for all programs. Equal modulation, PCR content and market development, so forth. And I would also just consider underserved communities, not just for development, but also when you look to third-party certification capabilities. I thought, um, Circular Action Alliance did an excellent job on the needs assessment, contracting with a diverse team. And last, I have one question, uh, if you're willing to answer, and that's, I recognize that the deadline's coming up, October 1st for registration. Uh, when will, I, I understand you're going to share that with the state and I would ask the state, when will that list of registered producers be available to the public and stakeholders? Thank you.
God, I think I can respond to that if I, I can quickly. Um, um, I, I think we'll be looking to, uh, to post, uh, registered producers on our website as well. Um, I'm not sure if that'll be ready exactly on the first day, October 1st, but I'll, I'll check in with the team on that side. Uh, but I think we would expect to have that up, up, uh, uh, as soon as we can.
Thank you, Peter.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Peter, for your feedback and thank you, Pete, for responding. We are now going to go on to Sharon Cody. Sharon, if you could please unmute, say your name and affiliation and provide your comment or ask your question.
Hi, my name is Sharon Cody. I'm with Lando Lakes. I'm a producer and I was just offering up a suggestion earlier when you were talking about, how can we manage PCR through the, I think it's like the first option that you had, which is through modulating the base fees. And it seems like you could just add an extra category, like a category for PR, PET and then one for our pet or similarly for polypropylene or glass or paper. So you have one for each one that has, um, uh, recycled content and one that doesn't. And maybe it has to have it to start with at a base level like 10%. And then producers can choose either one of those categories based on what they have in their packaging. Um, and then later as data is developed, uh, in, in for future years, you could allow producers in that next phase of your development to, um, be specific about the amount that they have beyond that 10%, like some might be at 20, some might be at 30. So just a thought. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon, and thank you, Peter. And that was our last public comment request for this topic. Um, we do have one other person in the queue, but that's going to be for circularity. So I think we'll just go ahead and we'll call on Chris in the second public comment period when we talk about circularity.
Great. Thank you, Brandon. I, I saw the third, but I didn't realize it was for after the next session. So good catch on that one. And we'll, uh, come back to Chris. All right. Thank you, Brandon. And also thank you to Peter and Sharon for your comments. I really appreciate that. Okay. So we're now going to move on to the second and final topic of today's technical work session, which is building circularity. And this I think I go over to Pete.
Thanks, Scott. Um, and I apologize to people. I've got a bit of a cold, so I'll, I'll do my best, uh, and I'm, but I may take a few more drinks than usual. Um, so this was a part of one of the public consultations that we've, we held. Uh, we also talked as well in this section about, um, uh, Murph Investments and, and market investments. We've spoken to this group already about those. So I just isolated, uh, some of the areas that we haven't, uh, addressed with this group as part of this, uh, presentation. Um, certainly when we talk about circularity, we're looking at how do we keep materials circulating fluidly within an economy? Um, and so, uh, really, uh, we're looking as part of this as different ways that we can help to do that. And that can be, as I said, through, through investments to make sure that materials can be better sorted uh, and markets to make sure that, uh, there are more markets, uh, for that material, that the material is higher quality uh, and can be used in higher, uh, levels of, uh, of use. So packaging to packaging is an example. Um, there are some other ways I think we're going to look at, uh, additionally as to how we improve circularity. Uh, so I'm going to deal specifically in these slides with a collection from non-residential entities, which is part of the program plan, uh, and as well about, uh, reuse um, and refill. So just starting, uh, specifically, uh, with, uh, reuse and refill, or sorry, with, um, sorry, a collection from non-residential covered entities. The legislative requirements in the program pa, plan indicate that we must describe a process and timeline beginning low later than 2028 to expand recycling services to applicable non-residential covered entities, uh, as identified in the needs assessment. Um, and that, uh, does as well, uh, include paying particular attention to small business and to the types of, uh, and locations of non-residential covered entities that could be provided with recycling service that would increase statewide collection and recycling rates in a cost-effective manner. Um, so, uh, we'll talk about this in a bit more detail, but some of those non-residential covered entities would include outdoor and indoor public spaces. Uh, so that could be things like indoor, meaning like an airport or a transit station, uh, events and stadiums, food and drink establishments, uh, state and local governments, schools, accommodations, which, you know, has everything from hotels, motels and ski resorts. Uh, and then small businesses. Next slide over. Uh, regardless of the type of covered entity that we're talking about, the covered materials, uh, remain the same. Um, among other criteria, covered, uh, covered packaging material does not include if it's used solely in transport or distribution to non-consumers, if it's used solely in business-to-business transaction where covered material is not intended to be distributed to the end consumer and it's not sold or distributed to covered entities. Um, we are looking to sort of focus on what is residential-like or household-like packaging and paper, not materials that are solely intended for commercial use. So an example would be, um, like large volume containers, uh, that might be provided, pallets, things like that, that are provided, that are really more of that business-to-business structure. So we're trying to capture like materials, uh, that our material recycling facilities would already be, uh, capturing and processing. Next slide. So again, we're looking to make sure that we are focused on covered materials supplied by producers. Uh, so look, uh, toward creating a more clear set of materials that we are seeking for collection and management. Um, so what are those set of materials that we were, are actively, um, uh, looking to capture? So again, are we talking, uh, glass, uh, bottles and, um, uh, plastic bottles or, or cartons, paper cartons? Or are we looking to capture, uh, you know, uh, fountain dispenser, uh, um, uh, uh, bags? Uh, so again, I think we're trying to be much more specific in what it is we are actually looking to capture and create more of that sort of decision tree around what is collected and what is not. Next slide. So we are looking at, in doing so, we're looking at, how do we look at other types of definitions that might be out there? We've provided an example of Belgium. Uh, Valley PAC is a system currently right now that does distinguish between household-like packaging, um, and, and more of the industrial. So it, it, it starts to look at, what are the examples of the types of sizes of containers that would be captured? Uh, so typically what would you have in your household versus what would, uh, uh, a large volume, uh, processor, uh, be taking? So again, they have separated out and created some differences between the size of jam jar that you might have versus what you might see in a, in industrial or commercial application. Um, so again, I think the example of types of exclusions that we would be looking to make are things like drums of materials, crates, uh, commercial confidential papers, uh, spools, things that are, are used, uh, in that larger, in those more commercial types of settings uh, and wouldn't be, uh, generated really at, uh, uh, a residential, uh, household. Next slide. So the following slide then includes a list of the covered non-residential entities that will require collection, um, and the definitions that are included specifically, um, in the regulation and the, the, uh, uh, sorry, in the legislation and in the regulation. Um, there is, I think, however, some need, uh, for us to scope these entities down, uh, from where they currently sit. Uh, so, you know, there is the question of small businesses. So small businesses, if we were to look at as an example, uh, that includes any business that has, uh, 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 a total uh, annual gross revenue of less than, um, uh, what is specified, uh, in the, in the act. And Wolf, you'll remind me specifically, is it 5.2 million currently right now?
Uh, it's up to 5.6.
5.6 million. Uh, so if we're thinking about the, the amount of businesses in, uh, Colorado, that includes, that includes a lot of businesses, uh, that we would potentially need, uh, to collect from. Some of those businesses potentially that might not be really managing any, um, packaging materials. So that would include potentially landscaping businesses, uh, small construction businesses, uh, that might be operating. And so I think we're looking at how do we scope those materials or those, um, uh, th, th, these examples down. So are we including all government operations? Including both those that are public-facing and non-public-facing? So you might have a, a government building that is, um, a city hall. Uh, so that would include a public space and a non-public space. Uh, you could have recreation facilities, again, public-facing. But you also have a number of government entities or buildings that are non-public-facing. So that could include things like a laboratory, uh, that could include a wastewater treatment facility. So I think we're looking, as we look at that, do we, do we, uh, uh, narrow that definition down? For food and drink establishments, are we talking about every restaurant? Or are we talking, is there a difference potentially between, um, sole businesses or franchises? Um, um, and again, I think we, we have certainly questions as we look at these types of entities where you may have some of these businesses that are operating in common spaces and, and what I mean by common spaces is you might have one floor of a building that is government, uh, but it's operated by a management company with, uh, you know, 12 other floors uh, that are all different, uh, businesses that may not be included. Uh, you might have strip malls and I know, uh, from my visit, uh, last time, there are quite a few strip malls uh, that are in place in, uh, in, um, Colorado. Those strip malls would potentially have, uh, a, a management company that is managing all of the businesses within that, uh, strip mall. And so there are certainly questions I think we have as if one business in that is, uh, uh, an entity, uh, that is potentially captured under these definitions, how are we providing service to just that entity, uh, as opposed to that entire, uh, strip mall facility? Uh, next slide over. And so I think this is really, uh, where we're looking for, uh, feedback, uh, from, from the advisory board and from, uh, the general public and other stakeholders to sort of get a better understanding as to where it may be the most appropriate way, uh, uh, to scope uh, the non-residential covered entities. Um, and we do try to keep in mind that the uh the non-residential covered entities. Um and we do try to keep in mind that the state law does talk about uh increasing statewide collection and recycling uh rates in a cost-effective manner. So how do we meet uh the intention of the legislation uh in the way that's set out? Um I I talked about uh I I I talked about earlier, the various types of entities. Is there potential for us, should we look at more of a phased type of an approach for how we go after uh 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 non-residential covered entities? Uh so do we look at, you know, earlier uh uh examples that might be more clear, schools uh that might be uh easier to go after first and then create more of a rolling type of approach uh to uh to collecting from those entities? Um there is, as I said, I think, you know, all businesses to some degree struggle with high contamination rates. Uh we know that uh public spaces uh do deal with high uh contamination rates. Uh you are equally likely to receive lots of uh beverage-type containers as well as lots of uh poo bags uh at the same time. So how do we look at at those areas um? Uh to try to ensure that we're capturing clean materials uh that uh the MRFs can process uh and that we can actually send to uh responsible um uh end markets. And then how should C A approach small business again with shared services? We spoke, I spoke to this one already, like strip malls uh where there might be multiple entities and you might have some examples of very, very small types of of businesses and you might have quite large businesses, potentially like uh financial institutions that will be uh uh together in one uh one type of uh uh strip mall. And Scott, I will stop talking now and I will open it up uh to the group uh uh for any feedback that you might have.
Great. Thank thank you. I just want to say, we we do have another uh uh semi-section here on reuse and refill, another seven slides and we do, you know, we're gonna go till uh one thirty. So we've got probably ten minutes here, maybe fifteen, um but I just want to make sure we have time for the next section as well. So uh those advisory board, yes, Gail.
Hi, thank you, Gail Gary, City of Steamboat Springs, City Council. Um local governments outside of the front range seat. Um as I look at your list, certainly from a rural resort perspective, um absolutely taking into consideration what our resorts do and what they do in terms of the collection of materials. You know, would certainly significantly increase the amount of materials that we have in you know, in a in a community, certainly such as Steamboat or Vale or you know, any any of the other resort areas. So I'd I'd certainly put that out there um, you know, for your consideration.
So so Gail, if I I can follow up on that on that comment, i- is there any type of scope then you would add to that category of 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 hospitality? I mean, wh- when you look at your community, um so there is that balance of uh I think what you're saying is resorts definitely should be included. Uh there are hotels, uh motels, uh restaurants. Is there any scoping that you would see or you would you would potentially recommend in that grouping?
Well, I mean, I I guess I, when I look at the list, I mean, do you need to call out specifically like a a resort? Right? Um whether it be a ski resort or you know, any sort of other uh you you know, resort like that. So that's that's specific. I mean, that's, you know, much more specific than, you know, obviously, we have the hotels, you know, the motels um. Uh but you know, from a a pure resort, you know, kind of from a pure resort perspective, they, you know, have a a lot of materials that are being um collected, certainly used and collected. Does that clarify your question?
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Scott.
Oh God, I was uh Scott the Five Glass Pak, you know, I was really trying to wait to let other people put their hands up. Um. In in this particular, I have a question first and maybe Wolf can 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 help. The the exemption is for fees, right? Or are the small businesses that are exempt? Is there uh equal obligation to service them from the pros' perspective? So they're not paying the fees, but they get the service?
They use the same definition, uh Scott, uh for small business um for what's excluded, uh exempted. Um I mean, those businesses may be exempted um but potentially they're selling brands.
Yep. Yeah, okay.
Which may be included, if that helps.
I just wanted to make sure I clar- clarified that. Um uh certainly in the in the resort space, in the space where there isn't already of uh you know, a well-developed single-stream system and you know, you know, in the more rural areas where some of the communities are collecting certain materials separately. And I, you know, I think certainly in the multifamily space and in the commercial district space, you can use some larger containers that may allow you to keep the some segregation of the materials. It would be a perfect place to put film aside and glass aside and let the other commingled stuff, you know, sit in one bin. Um because you're not already commingling it, you're, you know, right? So let's and then skip a certain process, it will save the it will save the system, you know, fees from having to move it too many extra steps along the way. Um and so I think that that, you know, makes some sense at places that are you're high enough, I think, with you have, if you find some locations in hospitality districts, you know, there you're gonna find some non, you're gonna find some retailers that aren't that may have covered product. Um but I think it makes perfect sense to aggregate as a shopping center, you know, rather than a individual.
Yeah. That thanks for that suggestion. I think it's a good, you know, suggestion for pri- prioritization, if you will, um for uh for C A A to be considering in their plan.
Um sorry, sorry, Scott, I'm sorry, one extra thought I that I left the table. This may also en- enable you to have greater use of the transfer stations that we haven't talked a lot about that that, you know, that are in the system, but um could be utilized in this in this space.
Thank you, Scott. Any comments on that? Pete?
No, I I think that's helpful. Maybe I'll, I don't see any other hands up and and I can start on the next slides, but I'm gonna be uh yeah, I'm gonna nudge a little bit. Um I I often hear uh uh some of my colleagues in the uh in the service provider community have concerns about uh us servicing uh different types of of commercial uh uh um entities. And and so I I just wanted to make sure before we moved on, whether there was any any feedback from uh from folks on the call that that may uh that represent the the service provider community, whether that's haulers or or processors about if they've got any thoughts specifically um on this.
Barrett?
Uh yeah, Barrett Jensen, Waste Connections, uh Landfills with Recycling. Thanks, Peter. I promise I'm listening, just not on camera. Um yeah, I mean, when it comes to, you know, as far as the collection piece, you know, we're we're not gonna know you know, if if there's covered entities, if it's like a strip mall, um we're not gonna know that um based off of picking up the container. Uh we also, a lot of the commercial pieces, right, are are part of multifamily unit routing. Um so and that's a totally different piece. I will say, you know, for, you know, outdoor public spaces, and I think a lot of people know this, right? But if you just start throwing containers out into the open, uh they will become trash. Um that's always been the case. So I think a lot of that's gonna require the education and outreach piece. So implementing all this in twenty twenty eight probably wouldn't be a strong call, especially for the MRFs where they'll probably see an influx of of trash if that were the case. Um and and Rick can can talk to that as well, I'm sure. Um there are, as we know, a lot of zero-waste events throughout Colorado, I think where I've seen a lot of success just in my career um is areas in which, you know, public spaces where we have people monitoring and saying, hey, that 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 doesn't go in there. Um if it's kind of left out to the open, um it's typically used as a waste receptacle. Um so a phased approach would be the best, um while education outreach is is doing its part on the residential side to help inform people um out into the um uh uh open spaces and public spaces.
Super helpful. Thank you, Barrett. Sorry to put you on the play on the spot.
But you got the feedback you wanted, so that's good. Anyone else, any other service providers uh wanting to weigh in here? See who we have left. Okay, Barrett again.
Yeah, again, uh Barrett Jensen with Waste Connections, uh representing landfill with recycling, you know, kind of to to Scott DeFie's point earlier. It's and it's not necessarily the same thing, but but what I've seen a lot in the recycling, right, is is if the waste portion of it gets introduced to the recycling, a lot of it can contaminate it. I think, Peter, you said uh I think you said dirty diapers, um that can take valuable recycling and and turn it to trash pretty pretty instantly. So I I definitely caution right, you know, as we move forward, if if there's a lot of possibility to contaminate, you know, true solid waste with recycling, we should definitely try to avoid uh that commingling.
Thanks, Barrett. No, I I I I think I was referring to 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 dog poop bags. I mean, as you start to get into public space and parks, uh uh sometimes uh uh the public isn't always uh as clear as to which which uh which receptacle they're throwing uh their waste into.
Absolutely, and that'll that'll do it, too.
All right, Gail.
Thank you, Gail Gary, City of Steamboat Springs, City Council. Um just following up on Barrett's comment, I had received a question in regard to events. I think as Barrett mentioned, certainly, you know, and there are a lot of, you know, events in, again, the rural um resort areas, you know, and and beyond, right, all across Colorado. And to have them be effective zero-waste events, we, you know, you do need to have um somebody standing there helping uh, you know, sort and telling people, you know, which container to put, whatever it is they have in. Um so we just, that prompted a question for me. Will, would that be considered part of the cost, right? So to the extent that um you know, events uh sometimes pay the uh person that's standing there, you know, as part of um, you know, the zero-waste process to help do the, you know, help kind of guide and do the sorting.
Yeah, I think it's an, I think it's an, it's an excellent question. One that we haven't yet to contemplate because we're just looking at what qualifies, but does like be get a number of other questions when you start looking at reimbursements as to like who, how does that reimbursement flow and to whom? Because it's no longer just the collector. You also have event organizers, volunteer staff, non-volunteer staff, like, so that reimbursement process for an event could get really uh get tricky really quick, you know, and like how we verify those costs as well. Um so I'll have to give that some thought. But that same same thought was going through my brain, like going to a music festival, like to are you, to whose game reimbursed where and where do we intervene in that stream? Um to weigh in on Pete's question, so I'm no longer an operator, but I have operated recycling programs in Colorado. And same thing you're saying, Barrett, like we put I started some public sector recycle or public space recycling when I was uh operating a system. And not only did it just turn to trash, it turned into like uh illegal dumping couches, like it's um yeah, putting those bins out there gets tricky. A lot of you very parsimonious in how we do it.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Uh not seeing any other questions, I'm gonna suggest then, Pete, that we take the opportunity opportunity to uh move ahead to the next slide and get into reuse and refill.
Perfect.
And and Yuri is uh is also having a cold, so the colds are going around. Hopefully, it's not uh, you know, the COVID thing because uh that's going around too. So take care, bro. All right.
All right. So uh the legislation uh does require us to have an approach to measure and report on uh the use of refillable and reusable covered uh materials and establish goals and strategies for increasing uh the use of those uh uh materials. Um I I have uh included uh the definition of reuse and refill on this slide, but should also highlight um uh that the definition does also state, this is in the in the rules, that returnable reusable packaging is packaging designed to be recirculated multiple times for the same or similar purpose uh in its original format in a system for reuse that is owned by producers or third party and is returned to producers or a third party after use. Now that that is important um um uh because uh it it the ownership piece would be potentially different than what might be uh considered as refillable at home, and I'll 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 move back to that uh shortly. Um and then, secondly, it does talk about refillable packaging is packaging designed to be refilled by consumers multiple times for the same or similar purposes in its original format. Uh and that is sold or provided to consumers once for the duration of its usable life and where the producer has made the same or uh similar product available for consumers to refill five times without the need for additional packaging. And that last piece there, without the need for additional packaging is also a consideration as we move forward because there certainly are examples of refillable products where you uh go into the store and you buy uh an additional piece of packaging that you use to refill uh that container with. So again, something uh just to highlight as uh as we move forward on these slides. Next slide over. Sorry. Um so this just sort of walks through a little bit of the uh Colorado requirements. Uh covered material includes packaging material that is not designed uh for reuse and refill. So as a result, and I think Yuri spoke to this already, reuse and refill uh packaging is not a covered material. Um and so that's an important uh distinction. The the rules in Colorado do state and do require that producers must submit documents and records to the pro um if they believe they are exempt uh as a covered material. So they still need to prove to the pro, so there is still some ability for uh the pro to make sure that those materials are exempt. But it doesn't necessarily mean that those entities will have to report on an annual basis on the amount of refillable or reusable packaging uh that they're providing into the marketplace. The legislation uh requires us to, again, establish goals and a strategy. Uh but there's not necessarily a legislated target. Uh the needs assessment did include a ten percent per capita waste reduction factor uh by twenty thirty. Uh and that was assumed when we wrote that to include some level of reuse and refill within the strategy or or within the needs assessment. The legislation provides no specific language on how measurement of reuse and refill uh should happen. Uh so that was is something else we'll need to establish as part of the program plan. Um for eco-modulation, again, we've talked a little bit about this already. Uh we do need to look to provide incentives based on high refill rates uh and designs uh for reuse and refill of covered materials. Next slide. Um the this slide really just provides some examples of the different types of reuse and refill systems uh that currently exist. Um so refill on the go, refill at home, return from home and return on the go. And as I mentioned, I think as we look at the definitions uh that have been provided for recent refill, it does not look to us like uh that sort of refill at home, it would be captured under the definition of reuse um uh and refill. Partially because, again, um you need additional packaging to use that material. So let's say you've got uh a cleaner and you still have to go to the store to buy uh packaging uh that uh is a concentrate that you refill that bottle with. Um so that would not be included. You're reducing the amount of packaging that might be needed. And again, our fees would take that into, our fee structure would take that into account. But again, there is uh a bit of a difference in the definition that I, we we see that as not being included. A next slide. So I I'm So I I'm going to chat just chat briefly on the challenges around measurement of reuse and refill that we need to overcome. First, as mentioned, you know, the fact that Colorado does to some degree exempt reusable and refillable packaging as covered material does potentially make it provide a bit of a barrier. Again, there is that ability for us to require proof, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that would require annual reporting. So I think there's a question here around how we can, how we can collect data from producers that may not necessarily have a full obligation to report that data. So I think we're looking at should we only focus on new reuse and refill systems? So meaning a a a producer is manufacturing packaging right now that is single-use, and so we would take into account when there is a change from that single-use disposal packaging to to reusable, refillable? Or potentially, do we include all reuse reuse and refill packaging that may include, again, some of the systems that are already in place right now? So things like, you know, I don't know, bread trays or milk crates or water tower bottles, those types of things that may be already common within the within the system. I think we're interested in figuring out what might drive an organization to report if they don't have requirements in 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 the act. So it does potentially, there is a bit of additional burden for them if they're going to report to us. So how do we create that impetus for them to report? Other considerations, you know, should reusable packaging be required to be recyclable as well? Is there anything we need to take into account on that side as we look at things like eco-modulation? Should there be need to verify that the packaging actually uses less material than single-use? Should there be any consideration as to when that reuse system was established? Does it matter if it was, if it's been in place for a long period of time or just a short period of time? And what's the best means for us to verify that an item actually meets the reuse and refill definition? Our next slide over. Um, so we're currently right now looking at developing a really simplified process of reporting on reuse and refill covered materials. We are looking to as much align that as possible with the source reduction requirements that are coming in place in California, knowing that there may likely be producers operating in in both of those jurisdictions. So trying to make it as simple as possible for those producers in in actual reporting. We have provided a bit of an example on the bottom of the slide that that sort of shows potentially how that source reduction potentially could be established. And that would be obviously looking at the same material being used, not a switch. So it wouldn't be a switch from one type of packaging to another because that would be sort of an apples to oranges comparison. Uh, we're working to ensure we have the ability to measure, again, based on those different types of reuse and refill systems that are in place and are seeking feedback on how to reduce, again, any burdens that might be associated with reporting those that information to us. And right now, we're looking potentially at incentivizing exempt producers to report through this process. And we would look potentially at highlighting those 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 producers as part of educational campaigns. We would look to run around reuse and refill. Next slide. So we're proposing the following as as part of a draft reuse refill strategy. We would establish a continued continuous improvement reuse and refill goal, meaning that the amount of reuse and refill would increase year over year. We would focus on education and outreach activities to highlight the benefits of reuse and refill using a similar structure as we would have in place for communicating to the public and different organizations about recycling and about compostable materials. Again, so using service providers, local governments, tribal organizations, and community-based organizations to get the messaging out. In this in this specific area, we may also look at trade associations as well to drive that message home, knowing that some of these reuse and refill structures may fit well within certain types of businesses, so like the hospitality sector that we've talked about to some extent. We develop and and provide key messaging and customizable templates that could be used by those various entities. We we try to use a broad range of tools and approaches to get to those audiences. And we've talked about, I think, a lot of those as part of the promotion and education side already. We provide an advantage to reuse and re- refill covered materials. Again, obviously, we're not requiring any type of producer dues for those materials. And we would look at an eco-modulation factor to reduce those dues and to recognize designs for reuse and refill. And then we would look around partnerships that we might be able to put in place related to guidance materials to assist producers in moving from or moving to a reuse and refill type of a system. Sorry, next slide. I think that just has some questions and maybe Scott, you can take those as I just have a little bit to drink.
I was going to suggest that you're you're a real trooper, you and Yuri here. So thanks for bearing with us. So here's the three questions for feedback. What do you see as the best way for CAA to measure reuse and refill packaging? Do you agree with a continuous improvement target? Or do you think CAA should be establishing a different target? Do you have other suggestions related to how CAA approaches the reuse and refill strategy? So anyone from the advisory board have comments, questions? Shouts of encouragement. Scott DeFy, thank you.
Somebody has to, sorry.
Somebody's got to do it.
Yeah, somebody has to go first. I I I think you should try to get some sort of baseline. Because i- in the future, you may want to measure, you know, the growth of it. I mean, you've got to measure the growth of it. And so just starting with things that are brand new and don't acknowledge the existing system. Plus, knowing what the existing systems are may allow you to help encourage producers to join or reuse and refill needs a a different infrastructure. And once that infrastructure exists, like the dairy, not covered, but washing. Once the washing, you know, you know, exists, then other things can glom onto it, right? Co-packing situations, things of that nature can be great. We're we get asked all the time to explore refillable glass, wine, different regions. The first thing we need is some washing and sterilization infrastructure. If it exists somewhere for milk bottles, then it may be adaptable to other packaging that may be able to come in and and adapt to it. So I do I think it's just very generally good idea to try to figure out exist at least what's in there in the first place. I do have a couple of questions about how you would treat some of the the options. I, you know, unfortunately, I think a lot of the stuff that may use reuse refill might be in the smaller exempt, you know, category right now. Growlers exist, you know, the small kegs in in Germany, they count pony keg. I call them pony kegs, maybe I'm dating myself, but the little pony kegs in in Germany are counted as as refillable, reusable, refillable, and 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 they deliver those to German homes. And I guess maybe they just tap from the the dinner table or something like that for beer in Germany. But, you know, anyhow, can you go back to the slide that showed the different modalities?
You're meaning that circle? Yeah, the circle one, Brandon, I think that one.
There you go.
Yeah, thanks.
How would you treat? What I'm going to call a hybrid, where you have a refillable thing at home, but then you get sent the the refills in a non-refillable, non-reusable, single-use pouch or something like that as your refills, right? So you have the, you 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 buy the thing once. There's a soap brand, there's a detergent brand, I've seen a toothpaste brand. You know, that 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 actually, it's not toothpaste in a tube, it's toothpaste in a tablets. But you get the jar at home and that's the refill thing. But the reef, the the replacement stuff comes to you in non-refillable, you know, non-reusable packaging. That's a question. I I'm not, I don't have to give me an answer. There there's that hybrids out there already, so. No, those are my, but certainly, I think your math on the on the 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 savings from the refill is important and that you need to have some idea to make sure. I mean, five's a relatively low number in typical refill debates. You know.
Okay, Scott, do maybe we'll just pause there and see if Pete has a response. There's a a a bunch of things that that Scott raised here. Pete, do you want to respond to those, please?
Yeah, no, I I think I think super helpful, Scott. I I mean, the I I think the first question around, if it comes with additional packaging, then my sense would be based on the definition that's in the law. It would be captured. So if the bottle is coming with the product to start with, that's included as packaging, so they would be paying one time. And then, because you're having to buy additional packaging around it, that would be, that would as well be included. But obviously, you're reusing that bottle, so the the producer is paying less in in producer fees because it's just a small amount of material that's getting captured. I I think there's lots of questions around measurement that I think we're still playing with, which are not playing with, but trying to figure out how we deal with. So refill on the go is a great example. Often, people will have durable cups that they'll purchase. Those are durable cups. They're, you know, it's difficult for us to call that packaging if it's been sold in a store as a as a, as a, so I don't know how you would count those. Even in like a bulk store, where people right bring in their own packaging, again, difficult per se for us to necessarily capture that. And a lot of those businesses, you're absolutely right, potentially would be exempt under that 5.6 million in gross revenue. Now, I'll I'll look at Wolf to give me the thumbs up whether I got it right this time.
Sorry, Pete, I was wrong.
Okay, okay. So whatever number Wolf put in the chat, I think, which he did. You know, again, there's going to be a lot of those businesses. So so some of the reuse and refill structure that I think we've talked about and was included in the needs assessment is going to encompass a lot of those more small niche areas. And so, again, I think we're just trying to figure out they're exempt as covered material and they're also potentially exempt as a business. So how do we try to get some of that baseline information in? And so that's the struggle I think we're having as we move forward.
It it's an emerging area that is adapting as the laws are coming in. So some people may have come up with innovations that may not particularly fit the way that everything's written. And so I think it's a moving target for at least, you know, the first five, the first pro plane, I mean, arguably easily a moving target right now.
But I think this is where, you know, again, those are on the call. If there's feedback on some of these areas that people might have experienced, that they are collecting some of that information, as much feedback as we can get on this side to figure out how do we make it as easy as possible? And also ensure that there's a bit of, there's some rigor in that data so that we're we're providing you know, concrete information, solid information back as we move forward.
Yeah, so if if there are any others outside the advisory board that are on the call and you have a a comment or question you'd like to mention here, you can you can let us know. We were about to move to the public comment here. And I know we have one so far, so we we may have time for one more question here at the advisory board and a quick comment, question, and a and a quick response if anyone else has one before we move to public comment. Pete, Yuri, I think you're warm out. Okay, here we go. That's success when everyone's got all the questions and comments, you know, and opportunities. So we're going to move now over to Brandon. Brandon, over to you for the public comment.
Thank you, Scott. Members of the public, we are now at our second public comment period for today. If you're interested in providing a comment or asking a question on the topic of circularity, please submit your name and organization in the chat, and we'll call on you in the order that we received your requests. Since we have limited time, we are going to allow for two minutes for each comment. And question and answer periods will be moderated based on the total number of individuals in the queue, so we can allow all members to participate. We're going to begin with Chris Piché. Chris, go ahead and unmute, say your affiliation and provide your comment or ask your question.
Right, thank you. Hi, Scott. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm here representing Oskala AI, which participated at the last Next Cycle event held in Colorado. On Next Cycle, it's one of the best accelerator program for startup companies in the States regarding clean tech initiative. And we present a pilot scope areas that the project is designed to optimize allers pickups with the resulting dynamics data, benefiting producer owners and the broader population. So far, we've already secured support from Rosbergman at Green Blue, which going to be certifying the collection processing method and also had a mail from Direct Polymer, a local processor, to be audited by Green Blue just to provide some more local end market. To start, we suggest focusing on commercial oiling sector or non-residential in the EPR scheme. This will allow us to emphasize the ESG reduction and circularity benefit early on. Carbon, glass, plastic, organic. There's no cost for all in company to participate since we have many projects and many funds, the grants for state funds to to cover that kind of initiative, thanks to Colorado. The more gentler side we have, the better it is. We also collaborating on the local ARS stakeholder, Anna Perks. So feel free to contact Anna. There's also different communities that goes with this in terms of security, cardboard, glass, organic and residential ways. In a nutshell, we reduce the concentration of doing it and we pick up more product. But just recently, talking with people in California towards SB SB 1383, the data collection was very important for them. And they they were very interesting in in getting the data for reporting and forecasting more than equality to the benefit of the software. So we're looking forward to engage with any of you. Right now, we're looking for some oiling companies. We have different pilot accelerator program that we in discussion, Accelerator 100, where we accept them, waiting for the final answer on a glass project, King County Security and some more new Next Cycle coming over. We were also at the Canadian Stewardship Council, talking with many stewardship group. Thank you. Sorry for the longer delay. Right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And we do have one more request for public comment. We have Peter Beerbaum again. Peter, if you could please unmute, say your affiliation and provide your feedback.
Peter Beerbaum, One World.
Peter Beerbaum, One World Resource, I put it in the chat there too, uh, just. Just recognized composting services in Colorado don't have curbside pickup. Along with trash, so they have, they basically are a milk run service. So they have a very um motivated consumer base where. Which could be expanded into you reuse refill. And I I do know Compost Colorado is an example of one that has already expanded into reuse. Refill product services and I put their link in as an example.
Perfect. Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Chris. Uh, and thank you to everyone that has provided comment today. We do take all of your comments into consideration and we do include them in our meeting summaries. And now with that, I will go ahead and I will turn it back to Scott for our next steps and our adjournment.
Great, thank you very much, Brandon. Um, I want to thank uh all of you today for uh presentations. Thanks Pete and Yuri once again, um, and hopefully uh you you both. Uh, get get right back to being super well really soon, so really appreciate you being here. Uh, I want to thank the public uh for your comments as well. They're very important. Uh, I particularly want to thank Tanya and Valentina, our interpreters for today and as usual here, so thank you so much for. Uh, hanging with all the different voices and tempos and uh and accents and whatever it may be. Um, and Brandon, thank you also for uh for your work here as well, so. Uh, with that, uh, thanks for the advisory board, uh, very well here. I'm gonna move to our next meetings. So PSI is going to uh compile all of the board's. Feedback and comments, and here's where I'll acknowledge Megan Maven from PSI who's on the call, taking the copious notes and. Putting down those comments and working with with Pete and Yuri and and Darla and Wolf to. Really get some answers to all of these questions. Uh, so we'll be providing that to the Circular Action Alliance team, uh, and that draft feedback. Will be saved in the advisory board shared folder. Uh, our next technical work session is on October twenty-first. Um, and the meeting recording for today's meeting uh will be posted on the EPR webpage within the next few days. Um, also, before that next work session, there's a regular scheduled advisory board business meeting. Uh, and that's on October ninth. So lots more to come, uh, we're we're continuing the journey and thank you very, very much, everybody, uh, for being here today. Take care.